I call the August 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Library Trustees to order. How's everyone?
Good.
Very good, Roger.
All right, I guess we'll get right to it, but before doing so, I'll just remind everyone, and that includes myself, to kind of rein in my own conversations, so we keep the meeting to a reasonable length, and so I'm hoping that we can get all the items tackled here, but if not, and I'll just ask by consensus if we get to that point, to probably table, you know, items that aren't urgent to the next meeting or a workshop meeting, that's all. First item on the agenda, building updates/flooding, which kind of doubles as my August walkthrough. I was a little late in the game regarding August walkthrough, I was planning on doing it Saturday, and my whole world turned upside down. And so there's plenty to talk about regarding the building, and so I guess Beth, I'll have you start off this conversation about...
Sure, if you want slides, I'm not able to get, but I'm happy to talk. So I had oral surgery the previous weekend, was out on Friday when the flooding happened, so...
And I'm gonna ask you, Beth, if you move your mic over to your right, and yeah...
Let me put it over the...
Yeah, and then that will... And this is more for the recording on playback, yeah.
Project. So I was home sleeping after oral surgery when I got phone calls at 9:10, 9:11, 9:12 from frantic staff, from, I think Debbie was texting, and William Blake, I think I spoke with both William and Roger, that water was entering the library at multiple points on the first floor. The community room, which is room 103, the children's room, which I think is room 111, there was water coming in the emergency exits, not through the walls, not up from the floor, but just through three or four entry points. The children's program room, 114, which has a door on their end, and apparently there was a tornado coming through, not that close to Grafton, but close enough to dump about five inches of water in a very short amount of time, which the building could not handle. So it sheeted off the roof, I think onto the green roof, down, and then created essentially a river that flowed down the brick pathways, past the gardens, contained by a concrete wall that's out there near the patio furniture, rushing around the side of the building, in through any entry point it could find. I don't think it got close to the main door, I don't remember, I did send out some video, but it didn't penetrate at the main door into the foyer. Custodial and some staff were on site, so they started sweeping water out toward, out back towards the exits. At some serious risk, we have electrical outlets on the floor, and they were on that wet carpet sweeping with the electricity on, which is very dangerous, I'm very sorry. They were not aware that the hazard they were putting themselves in by doing that heroic measure. When the water hit the outlets, immediately the circuit breaker flipped and the electrical went off, so there was no longer a risk. They're using grooms, and then I think somebody got squeegees, and then we got wet vax from Koopmans. By that time, I think William Blake had arrived on site to help assess and figure out what next steps were. So we decided, I think I talked to William and Roger, to say, there's no way we can open, if we don't know the health and safety risk at that point, especially if the electrical's been affected and it's wet, we're gonna close for the next two days, pay staff, I'm not even gonna try and tell them to collect their belongings to work from home, like we're just paid, paid and closed. ServePro got in sometime Friday night around 5:30. I think we had some fans, and they had wet vax most of the water by the, and we had some fans blowing by the time ServePro came in with their industrial dryers and fans and dehumidifiers to try and get the rest of the moisture up. So it had Friday, Saturday, Sunday to dry up. ServePro was back, I believe, Monday to check on everything again. Today's Wednesday, this morning, I think they're back to check again. Everything is pretty dry. They said that because our carpet doesn't have any matting or insulation or padding underneath it, once the carpet is dry, there's no risk of anything wet underneath it that would create mold. So the carpets are likely fine in the community room and in the children's room. The vinyl flooring may be at risk for needing to be replaced because we're not sure if the water got underneath that vinyl flooring yet, so we can dry the surface of that floor. But if there's stuff that's underneath the vinyl flooring, that could create a problem, so that may need to be replaced.
What is beneath the vinyl? Anything?
Concrete.
Just concrete?
Yeah, I think just the concrete. Yeah.
All right.
It's pretty, it's thick vinyl, it's pretty soft to walk on, so it's, you know, no padding, just the flooring. So that water that came in the program room where there's vinyl, and into the children's room where there's carpeting, it also did go through into this children's room storage closet, which is kind of off limits to the public, it's just off the program room, and it penetrated into the children's room workroom, which is peripheral to all those spaces. That has a vinyl floor, the washer dryer are in there. Those were unplugged. Again, all the circuits were turned off. I haven't plugged them back in to see if the power comes on. There was some water underneath them, so I don't know if those are damaged and need to be replaced.
And if I could just interrupt you for a second, Beth, I had sent yesterday, created a PowerPoint, instead of sending all these pictures, I created a PowerPoint of 16 slides, and then also then transferred that to PDF, I sent it to the board, as well as you, Beth, and you, Debbie. And so I don't know if the, I mean, I think we all know what everything looks like. We agreed upon that we don't necessarily need to go through all those slides, that everyone take a look at them, or otherwise know the condition.
Yeah, I just have, I have a question.
Sure.
One question that was from an email you sent, and what you were saying, the community room, is there anything wrong with that? You said significant portion of the perimeter?
Yes.
Is that to the left?
Rug and flooring is fine.
Okay.
From, if you're standing in the library, looking into the room towards the patio, from about halfway through, you know, there's two windows, right? And then a space in between where the projection screen that comes down. So from about halfway, that halfway point, all the way around to where the piano is stored, they have ripped off the vinyl baseboard, and they think that from those two points, they will need to cut a foot up into the wall, remove the drywall and insulation behind, and then rebuild that back up.
Okay.
And they said that at the present, there is no risk of health or safety, you know, too soon to say if there's mold, but as long as you don't puncture the wall right now, then no mold can get in. So it's like a sealed, safe environment as it dries out, and then they'll go in and they'll cut and remove anything that might have gotten down.
Is that the only area that requires sheet rock cutting?
No. That is persistent through, so it's the community room, it's the same in the children's program room, in the regular main part of the children's room, some part of the children's workroom, it's like the corner from near where the washer and dryer is, around to where there's a counter where the staff sit, to part of that counter, the water flooded into that point. And then in the children's room itself, some of the millwork that's wood touched all the way down to the carpet. So for example, there's a decorative tree with paneling maple that goes up, we're starting to see that that wood is swelling, it's stained, and the vi, there's like a vinyl coat on it to make it shiny, and that vinyl is peeling. There's a fancy word for it that I don't remember, and that's true with the donor benches, and some of the shelving that's wood that touches the floor. I will say, staff responded heroically to move things out of the way, and we are somewhat fortunate that not everything is completely wood. Much of our shelving is metal baseboard, the chairs are metal baseboard, things can be wiped down.
Yeah. I just have to just point out that it was such a great team effort, under a very trying circumstances. I mean, I showed up, or I ended up heading there in the morning, and, you know, met with, quickly with the fire department. Mr. Berger was on site regarding the electrical as well, and discussing with fire, you know, safeties and circuit breakers, and Mr. Blake, William Blake, as Evan was out of the office all week. And so all the, you know, library staff, everyone, everyone just really just was all hands on deck right away.
Absolutely.
To, to, you know, they, everyone responded in the right way, just to say, this is basically catastrophic, we need to do something now. They made all their calls, and then everyone was just, you know, all hands on deck. So I guess, next steps, what happens as far as, what needs to be done now, and what is the estimated timeframe? And then maybe the longer, the question, the financial question is, does insurance pay for flooding?
Sure. So my understanding is ServePro will be coming back to do, I think, some kind of final assessment on Monday.
Okay.
They will give a quote for what the work that they believe needs to be done to remediate for all the things I described, to William Blake. He will turn that into the, to MIA, the Mass Interlocal Insurance Agency, who interferes the town, and they will cover the cost of the damage. This is a weather-related event, so I don't know, you know, if we need flood insurance or not, like this is like a freak storm that happened that caused this damage.
And the other question I had, and, oh, I'm, yeah, Doug, yeah, please.
Well, no, I was, so I just had a question about the wa, the wall. Did they actually do like a moisture test in the wall?
They did, but by not, they didn't penetrate anything, but they, they did a moisture test, and just said, we're gonna come back and assess again. But they, they said definitely that they will need to cut a foot up out of the wall, and take out that 12 inches of drywall and insulation, in the bottom foot of the wall, all in those areas. And as far as the timeline, I don't know. Of course, my hope would be that we will shampoo the carpets and clean everything, and be able to start taking book donations for our scheduled book sale on Monday. What I'm looking for is that the carpet to be shampooed, and I want an official sign-off that the electrical is safe.
Right.
It is on.
Yes.
I plugged in things, seemed okay.
Who is the sign-off on that?
I think the building inspector, or his electrical...
Yeah, the contractor, or the, okay.
Yeah, we'd like something in writing.
Right.
ServePro's professional assessment is there is no health or safety risk.
Okay.
At this time.
Right.
But, and as far, again, as far as timeline, like that is my hope, that between the book sale ending and Smallstones Festival of the Arts, starting October 16th, I think, that we've got a nice, more than a month window to take care of the remediation. But that is absolutely beyond my control, and while contractors are sometimes, you know, challenging, we're dealing with ServePro, who does this expertly, like this is what they do, and MIA should not, there shouldn't be a delay in MIA contesting it or paying for it. But I can't tell you, the room will be closed from these dates to these dates yet, I just don't have that information. And as soon as we have it, we'll let everyone know, including meeting conveners. We have something scheduled for this Saturday, and I had to tell them. I can't guarantee the room will be cleaned or available for the Saturday program, but there's the patio, or you can postpone to a different date. But like, I can't tell this group, you can use the historic reading room, because that's where we're operating children's services out of, with collecting return materials and offering the browsing collection, no activities.
So what happens next as far as, I originally thought that you had explained that it came off the roof, and that the, that concrete wall, that wall actually kept it close to the building. I initially thought that the wetland had crested.
Me too.
And that that wall, that that seating wall was beneficial to keep the water away from the building, but you're saying it's the other way around, that it kept it and it pushed it toward, maybe?
Did anybody see that go up? Because I went out, and, I know, I looked, if you look at the pictures, what you just explained, the damage to the community room, that's what I was afraid of, because that water went right by it.
Right.
But it, it followed the path of the stone, of the, of the pavers, almost.
Yeah.
Right.
So I didn't, I was told that there was a lot of water on South Street, so is it, I, is it a possibility that the water came up, came through South Street and came down the hill?
And you mentioned...
And the thing is, it was so much at once, that's the thing.
Yeah.
It was just so much at once, and none of the, you know, nobody could...
Well, when I got on site, it looked like everything was just basically, quote-unquote, dried out. Yeah, there was mulch everywhere, which suggested that a significant portion was contributed to by things falling off the roof, the water cresting off the roof all at, all at once, but, well, I'm concerned about what happens if there's another rain.
Right.
We're back at square one.
Yeah.
Is there any, I mean, this sound, is it too late for us to go out, and is there any, is there any way that we can get a sense where that water came from? Or is it too late for that?
Yeah, I think you need to look at the roof, because it might not have come from the roof at all.
Really?
Right? Because they, I mean, those, those roofs are piped down into the ground.
But I mean, if you get five inches in a matter of 20 minutes, or...
You mean overflowing the gutter system?
It basically crested off and just flew off. In other words, it was flowing so fast.
Yeah.
That a significant portion could very well have missed and never reached the gutter, that's all.
Which is true.
Like, didn't Stacy or somebody took a video of the...
Yeah, we sent them out.
Yeah, and I think it was more of...
The water.
The coming toward the front of the building, and so...
And if you visualize where the, the children's amphitheater is, right, at the end of that walkway, like that is at the bottom of a hill.
Right.
Makes sense for it to be sheeting. I will say that we had our HVAC commissioning, HVAC commissioning was scheduled for Tuesday, so somebody came up from Colliers, and we were up on the roof looking at all the HVAC units, and noted that the roof drain that comes off of, I think, the, the new large print and new book room, there's one drain, it dumps water onto the green roof, and if you look over the edge of the roof throughout the window, you can see there's a blank space, it's not, I thought maybe things were dying, but I think it's, there's water, so much water coming off the roof just in general, it's hitting that space on the green roof, and things aren't growing. And then I would assume the trays would fill up, and they're not dumping into the library anymore, because we cut them back.
Right.
And left a perimeter, but then they would be going into the gutter, and then flowing off the building and down into the underground drain.
Is that like a self-contained swimming pool up there? Is there, is there a body of water in that area?
No, there's, there's nothing pooled.
Okay.
So it's saturating the dirt, and then whatever's left will go into the gutters.
All right. So we had spoken about, you know, being an incident, and thus an incident report. What do you need to do, or what's left to sort of create a report, distribute it to whom and when?
Yeah, so I think, I did just send out an update just before I left with, here's the information I just shared, that I just got when I met with William Blake around 5:00 today. So I, and I think what, what's left is, you know, there, on the incident report, there's a note for how do we mitigate it, and how do we prevent it from happening again, and I think that's just gonna be an ongoing discussion. It may be the answer is, it was a freak accident, and we can't, it might be, we need more drainage, we need bigger gutters, we need to clean out, maybe the underground drains need to be cleaned out. We cleaned out the gutters really well, but, you know, there are underground drains. We're recognizing that one or two gutters, or downspouts may need soldering, it looks like there is water that goes into the downspouts and then spits out before it even gets all the way down to the bottom of the gutter. So I know that's creating an issue by the book drop, which is the other side of the building. So, you know, a construction team meets every Monday, we'll certainly discuss with them, but...
So where are the sandbags? Or if there's ever a forecast, even on short notice, of a significant rain incident, do those sandbags get put on the out, on the outside doors?
That's a question for somebody who has more experience with buildings.
Okay, I didn't know if you had had discussions with them.
Not yet.
We don't, yeah.
I don't think we own them, I thought...
Can we buy some?
We could.
Should we? I think we should buy some and have them near all the doors, because I think it could happen again. The question I was trying to figure out, now, it just, was the front flooded at all?
So, no.
Because that might give us some clues. I mean, if the front wasn't flooded, it could have come down from the hill.
There was mulch that was all washed around to the front of the, where the door was, because we had Joe sweep that up.
See, the front has the, front has the roadway, right? So most of it's gonna go into the asphalt roadway and washed away.
So that's where the water ran, because I saw it went, it was going in front of the entrance, so while I kept going, got into the...
And then there's the sewer drain.
Into the sewer drain, okay.
Yeah. I will say that the, the doors are two different companies, so there's the storefront doors at the entrance of the building, which we replicated in the presentation area and makerspace, right, with the curved handles that make the whole circle. And then there's, that was by Chandler, and then the other ones are the emergency exit doors that I believe are a different company, O'Brien. So it's possible that swapping out doors might also be helpful in the future, but that's just me speculating, like, I don't know. I don't know if the type of door made a difference for whether water came in or not.
Yeah, I mean, it really shouldn't let the water in. Well, you think, it sounds to me like in that community room, it went through the, if what you're saying happened, didn't it go through the brick, it's brick, right?
No, no, it only came through the, um, the emergency exit doors, in the program room, the children's room.
And then that went all the way, but so for some reason, it went to the right? But that's where you're cutting, that's where you're cutting all into the...
The drywall.
Was it got in, then the water went wherever?
Yeah.
So it didn't get in through that way, okay.
We don't, no, we don't think so.
Where are the...
If you look at that video, I, I'd have to look at it again. What I was trying to figure out was the water right against the wa, the side, the building?
Yeah.
Was that river wide enough, or did it, was it just the width of the paver? It would, hi, like, remember, like Stacy said, when we, so Doug, Dean and I talked to Stacy and Debbie last night at the library, and they were kind of explaining, but there was like, a lot of water outside the doors, and then the door, from what Stacy said, the doors really gave way, and that's when the water came in, like in the children's room. That's, that was what I heard.
It doesn't seem to take a lot of breach to create the water that was there. In other words, I'm surprised it wasn't more. It could have been, that thing, the whole first floor could very well have been flooded.
I think you're right.
So, yeah, if, the carpet, I think, acted as a sponge to help slow it down and sop it up, or vinyl, it might have gone all the way through.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
Into the lobby.
So...
Do we think that sandbags, like, would that prevent it, if you had sandbags out there?
Probably.
Yeah, would, maybe divert it? I'm no engineer, but, the town felt that putting sandbags, they put the sandbags there that morning, and so I don't know if they're still on site, or...
They are. I just don't know who they belong to, where they live, or how to get them again, or...
Sounds like something we should, we should purchase in the future.
Yes, so if we wanted, if we would like to get sandbags, do we, who, you know, how do we go about that, and is that something we should do? I mean, who's responsible for that?
And who would be, who would, who would jump into action?
Yeah.
You know, whose job description, other than, ah, I need to help out, is, is there? We don't really have custodian on site right there, and so...
We might eventually, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, I, I mean, I'm the de facto facilities manager, so I would work to put the building department and William to find out how to procure it, and figure out where to store it, and then develop a procedure for if we think there's a flood coming.
I think it's worth doing, and I also think, I think you're right, it doesn't hurt us to find out about the doors. If there's a door that would, is better suited, I think we need to get it, because didn't, we need to get, I think we should consider it at least.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I think that with all the flooding and hurricanes and tornadoes, I think it's, it may happen again. And you're right, there was a tornado, people forget about that.
Yeah.
That's why there was so much water.
I think that's why there's so much water, yeah.
But it, it was all those same doors, so I think that's a good point, that it was two different door companies that did it, and those are the ones that flooded.
But, yeah, I guess I was gonna say, also, like, three of the exits face the wetlands, right? And then, but then the children's program room is on the same plane, I guess, as the, the entry doors, right? They face the same direction, so it seems odd that it would go in the children's program room and not, and if it continued all the way around the front of the building, not in those, the vestibule doors.
Just one other... Well, because it followed the, I swear, it followed the path of the stones. But, I do, it was like, anyway, what I was gonna say is, so, I, no, because if, if the rain came from the street over the hill, that's why it came down, it came right down there, and that's why it went in the children's room. You mean, you don't understand why it veered, why did it veer to the left instead of veering to the right?
No, no, my question is, if the program room emergency exit and the front doors face the same direction, they both kind of face the parking lot, and then there's the other corner of the building where there's the two patio entrances, and the children's room emergency exit, but it's, you know, we're talking about doors over here versus doors facing this way. So why did it go in this door, the program room door, but not the front door that faces the same direction? Because it may be kind of different.
I don't think it faces, oh, I see. They just face the same way, but it was in the spot, it was in the right spot.
It was more water.
It had too much water, the water went in there, and it was just the force of it, I'm guessing.
But why didn't the gaskets hold up?
So what can we do, what, short term, what role do we play as a board, other than we're keeping constant lines of communication open? We don't really need to, I guess, appropriate emergency funds, things are being addressed in that way. ServePro has things under control as far as their assessment, and hopefully, knock on wood, things will be back up and running, but it's a wait and see. So do we, I mean...
And I just, I just wanted to make a point, we, so, so thank you again to the staff, like, for doing just a wonderful job, and I'm glad that nobody got hurt, we don't want them to put themselves in danger, but we are really, really fortunate that they were there and they took action. But one concern that I have is that we got lucky with the timing, because it happened to be when staff was on site. If that happened on a Sunday, or happened at 5:00 in the morning before people knew got there, then we would have been in trouble. So, you know, so that's the other thing, too, is like, you know, like, who's gonna monitor, like, are there any kind of like alarms or anything that could be used to...
If, if there's a complete loss of power to the building, I would have gotten an American alarm alert. And then if I was off-site, then I would have sent Grafton Police Department to go investigate, and then they would have, at that point, been able to say, oh, you have flooding. And then we would have started calling all the people that we ended up calling.
So there's no cameras on the exterior part of the building on that side?
There, there are, could be because we have them in every door.
So...
I have not looked at any exterior camera footage.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Has anyone?
There's been no time to do that, Roger.
I know that, we're just saying, then we do it. And how long do they retain for, Lee?
It's pretty indefinitely.
Erin, Erin wanted to speak, yes. So what I've been hearing is a lot of deliberation about, you know, where we think the water's coming from. I think, as, to address your, your question was, you know, what can we do as a board? Certainly, I think, the update that you, that you gave us just now, and also you reinforced over email, shows that ServePro has things under control, the library's safe and ready to use, there's some remediation that needs to eventually happen, but I think as a board, what we can do is, probably put on our, or grab our Sherlock Holmes hat and pipe, and really maybe take a look at the, at the footage, some of the photos, you know, through Beth, you know, speak with some of the staff, and try to figure out how we can prevent this from happening again. Like you said, that was my concern as well, like...
Right.
You know, this could have happened over the weekend, and it was really fortunate that it happened while, while they were open, so they could act fast. So I don't know that there's much more we can do, unless...
All right, so as far as the footage, though, so that's retained for how long?
Pretty indefinitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's cloud storage.
How do we get that?
I can look at it. If you're a member of the public, you have to do a public record request form, but I can...
Even for the exterior?
Yes, absolutely. If you're a member of the public, if you direct me to look at the camera footage, I'm happy to take a look at it.
I mean, I'd be willing to, is anyone willing to, on the quick look at this? I mean, I'd be willing to.
I would love to look at it. I could look at it with Doug.
I would just be, because I'm on the building committee, too.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe you could speak with Beth to arrange some time, maybe it won't take a whole, you know, ton of time to look and make a quick assessment, to, you know, I wasn't aware, as we were discussing this, that there was exterior footage back there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, so, yeah, uh. Are we ready then to move on to the next agenda item? I, I think we are.
Real quick, um.
Yeah, please.
I wanted to acknowledge the staff that were on hand that actually did this public, in a public forum, um, Sarah Bannister. Head of Children's, the Children's Department, Stacy Herbert, um, Allison Paccone, Allison Kushner and Sean O'Connell on his second day of work.
The new guy.
At the very beginning of his second shift, um, pitched in and, um, I think they're pretty much responsible for us not having hundreds of thousands of dollars. Damage to materials and equipment, um.
Hats off to them.
Something that, to consider in this is that staff were told that they would be paid for the day whether they were working or not. And I feel like the board should possibly consider, I don't know how this would go through of a comp day or a vacation day or something for the people that actually were there on. And the dirty water, moving furniture and things, cause it doesn't seem equitable, but they would make the same amount as someone who sat at home because they were on the schedule, but not there. When they were in it, and then for someone to look into, um. Like I know William Blake was there and I spoke to him this afternoon and I said, how are your shoes? He said, I threw them away to see if anybody's shoes. Anybody else had to throw their shoes away, their pants, like if it was mulchy and kind of dirty and there was a concern. I mean, I think that that would be something that, I don't know if that's for the board or for the town to reach out to see if any of their. If they incurred any expenses for having to, um, discard any clothing or shoes in there and they're doing a bet, like I know. William cut his hands too, like there was a whole bunch of stuff going on, so.
I don't know what the process of the, or the rules are regarding that, but I would certainly be open to some gesture. Meaningful gesture that you've recommended, I mean, they really were all hands on deck and did an unbelievable job at moving things over. And, and making the calls that they needed to, yes.
I just had one more quick question and I did wanna comment, the thing that they did was very incredible was they moved all the shelves with all the books. And that, that would have been a disaster, they were all moved when I went in there, so it was really great. What I wanted to ask you, Beth, so who will be supervising all the work has, that has to be done? Is that what, will William Blake be doing that?
I think, I think he's arranging it, I'm sure that he will be hands on and checking in.
Do you, do you think it's real- realistic that by mid-October, like by October fourteenth?
I can't, I'm so sorry, I cannot speculate or answer that question. I might have a better idea by Monday.
Yeah, that's good, I think, I think I might. For something else, think about delaying it.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have a lot of things booked in that room.
Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge, um, Joe Paccone from Custodial and Tom Edwards from Custodial and Bob Berger from the Building Department. I'm not sure if I saw Tom Federico there in the pictures or not, um, and Sergeant Michael Killian. From Grafton Police Department as well as William Blake from Town Administration.
Michael, was he police, you said police, did you mean fire?
I'm sorry, yeah, so I have, I have a migraine and I took medication and the headache is not too bad and I can see. But now that I'm older, I get dysphagia and I say the wrong word. So I'm not having a stroke, I'm not actually confused, but the thinking process right now for me is very slow. Cause I'm struggling with an ocular migraine and I did not wanna skip the meeting, so I'm here, but. Michael, Sergeant Michael Killian from the Fire Department, thank you.
All right, thank you for.
Of the Fire Department's help.
All right, um, all right, moving forward to approval of minutes, I will accept a motion to approve the draft minutes. Um, of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
All right, second? Doug, seconded, um, any discussion on the motion?
Is one of those, the one from the, um, um, what was it called? All night, what was that?
That was the twenty-sixth.
Okay, cause I was not there and I was listed as being in attendance, so I was not there.
But we'll get there. We'll get there. It's in, we, we're doing the nineteenth, in other words, we, the earlier meeting.
I see you only picked the first one.
Yeah, um, and, um, all right, any, any, uh. Comments or, all right, I had just, um, two quick things. On approval of bills, item number two, um, under A, B and C. We've been listing the sources of funds on those, on the minutes, haven't we? Or not? Because I think there was some, there was one set of minutes that I saw where, it may even have been this, where. The source of the funds was listed on the, um, on the motion.
I know we say them out loud. Yeah, I don't know.
We've said them out loud and it's been actually a new, new procedure with the newer members, it had never, had never been.
As long as it hasn't, i- it, as long as the checks and balances are there, I, it was just a question I had as far as whether it, it's something that we need to do. And you're saying that it's, it's been fine without that, so.
Cause they're listed in the warrants, right? So, cause that's where we read them from.
And then the other thing is, um, under. Third page, under ongoing business three E, about a half a dozen bullet points down. Um, Carrie was referred to carried. It was a, I think it was one of those spell check things. For, uh, under the word Beth, on the name Beth, Carrie, just take the D out. Hearing no other comments, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. And, uh, just as a, um. At the top of the meeting, I had overlooked that, uh, Dr. Texiera had, had notified me in advance that she wasn't gonna be here, so. And it was a last minute thing that, uh, uh, came up. All right, July twenty-sixth, do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes of July twenty-sixth?
So moved.
All right, motion made by Erin, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, Dana seconds it, uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, um, so. I know that the meetings we usually do, who wasn't in attendance, I wasn't in attendance, so. We usually put who's in attendance and who's not. So whoever wasn't in attendance, if you could just list that.
I wanted to clarify whether or not we were doing that, if some of these were not official meetings and I don't know, do we need, need to call people out that are not at official meetings?
I, I guess you make an excellent point because it's a, it's a paradox of approving minutes to a non-meeting. And the town clerk expects to have some documentation. So, I, all right, so I guess the fact that you put a quorum of the Board of Library Trustees was not reached. I, I'm okay with leaving that as is, is everyone else okay with that then? Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
It was lovely.
Declare the motion carried, all right. All right, and, and I had actually, as an aside, I had actually spoken with, I forget the gentleman's name. Um, who lives out in the western part of the state. You've given me his name and I spoke with him and he would, he was very much looking forward to and willing to, um. Come and speak at the library, community room and, and even as arranged with the, um, videotaping that. Um, having some type of other lecture.
Is that Robert Chaney, Robert T. Chaney?
Yes, that's the gentleman, yes, and so we had a nice discussion. Regarding, and it arose, uh, partly out of the accessibility question and everything like that and he's like, yeah, he's like, if I can get out there. Uh, to the library, I'll, I'll be more than willing to do an old lecture and I talked about the idea of videotaping it and, and then having it, um. Maybe even as a streaming video as a link on the Willard House, uh, the website, as, as a, as something to do so. I wanna mention it, um, as well, um, August one draft minutes, do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes of August one? The national night out.
I make a motion.
All right, Dana made a motion and.
Second.
Seconds, okay, any discussion?
This is just the one that I was not at.
I was not at that one.
So.
Were you at this one, Roger?
I was and, and that's I.
I was not at this one, so I did not.
Can someone clarify that if we're in a group together? And we don't discuss anything about the library and nothing was on the agenda, do we still need to post it?
Because you potentially could.
What if it's, what if it's impromptu? Like the national night out, I mean, that's just like something you go to if you want to, type thing, I'm just, I'm just.
And here's the thing, and, and, and it's, it's neither correct nor incorrect, on the last sentence, a quorum of the Board of Library Trustees of the Grafton Library was reached at various times. Maybe technically no, in other words, we weren't physically within earshot of each other, I think that may be the intent of. We couldn't have had a discussion because I don't think at any one time, four of us were at the table, although we were on the grounds.
That was copied from the, the, um, the notes that you wrote from Maryland.
You were in all in earshot.
But you, what happens, what happens to is that there's incident, sometimes incidental, impromptu, um, type of, um, situations. Where a quorum could be present in a vicinity or at, at something at one time. And, um, the open meeting law does recognize that, um, with the caution that. You're mindful that, that that has taken place and not to deliberate anything. And, and that, um, and in that instance, one could not have anticipated, necessarily anticipated that. But, um, so, um, so yeah, so I was in attendance, was there anyone else in attendance that isn't listed? All right, so because a quorum of the board was there somewhere on site. Um, Debbie, would you be listing then who was, wasn't in attendance in that instance? We really didn't deliberate.
I personally don't feel, uh, this is just me and I don't know the. The ins and outs of the bylaws, but I, I don't feel that it's necessary to name people in a public forum that were not in attendance, when they were not required to be in attendance.
And, and I'm, and I'm okay with that because I think, I think we're clearly acting in good faith and, and by the spirit of the open meeting law. Because a lot of committees would not do this or be mindful of even posting that which could very well be anticipated as a non-meeting. And so, um, it's just that the Attorney General's Office has been more mindful at keeping up on this with the town clerks. And so, um, it happened with my other committee and so, um, you know. I've sort of carried over that so-called hypervigilance to this board, um.
I would just add that I didn't, I did not see John the whole night, so that would be for, I mean, I'm serious and.
I was, I was. Pretty much.
I don't see how we could have, but I think we went really just to support Beth and also to show that, you know, we, we wanna hang out with the, with the local people and.
Yeah, I thought it was a great night, yes.
Well, I, I just wanted to go back to the telescope nights, so, um, we, we did receive donations of the telescopes as well, which was absolutely fantastic. So that's wonderful and I know, um, they're gonna be available to borrow via the Library of Things, which is great. And, um, but there was a little bit of time required to calibrate them before they were gonna be available and with everything going on with, with the flooding, I'm sure that's, it could take a little.
Who donated them?
So they were actually procured. Through Willard House, I mean, they, no, they didn't have to pay, but, uh. Bob Gerschek called up Celestron, who makes telescopes and binoculars and all kinds of things like that. And asked if they would donate one possibly to raffle off, to make the event a larger draw, and they said, we'll send three. Uh, and I think Aldrich was already gonna be onsite and have some telescopes and you may remember that a few years ago, Aldrich was securing telescopes. By asking local commercial businesses to front the money for them to buy a telescope, calibrate it for a library to use easily. Like increasing the magnification and making sure it wasn't complicated to use, and then they were then donating them on behalf of that business, the library. So Aldrich got involved and they're, you know, making them better and easier to use.
And I'm gonna take the segue just to get back to the motion on the floor and then we can just quickly get back if there are any other comments about that, uh, those particular, that particular evening. Um, any further discussion other than, I guess, adding my name and then John's, um, any further discussion on the August first minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Declare the motion carried, um, uh, but getting quickly back to the, the telescope night. Uh, um, what a great addition to the, um, collection, um, and so.
That's great.
And so, um, all right, number, all right, so approval of bills, we have, uh, four warrants to approve. Four, six, seven and eight, and I, I, for my own notes, I have them tabbed, so. Warrant number four, which we'll tackle first, I'll accept a motion to approve warrant number four in the amount of sixty thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And twenty-two cents, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, John makes a motion, do I have a second? Carrie makes a second, um, any discussion on the motion? And I know we anticipated this, thank you Beth for pointing out in advance, I think it was at last meeting, that we were going to be. A, a large, a larger than usual amount was going to be in front of us tonight, so, um, maybe, if, do you have any comments, um, um, about this?
Just, uh, at beginning of fiscal year, we have many contracted services invoices due for things that are contracted through the whole year. For example, um, the HVAC maintenance contract, the biblioteca contract for the self-check. Um, databases often run the fiscal year gamut, sometimes newspapers or magazine subscriptions that can be expensive, so it's those kinds of things.
Do I have any, uh, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Let me ask you, what happened to warrant number five, did we tackle that already?
I think I was out or somebody was out, so we just skipped it, we don't submit every single week, so we, we did not submit that week, so I have no bills that were paid that.
So what happens to?
So then anything that came in that week gets put onto warrant six, we don't not pay it, we just roll it over to the next.
How do these get numbered?
The, um, town accountant sends out a schedule at the beginning of the fiscal year with all of the dates. And we're always kind of operating a week ahead, so tomorrow is Thursday, I think warrant nine is due, but it's gonna be dated not for tomorrow, but for the following.
So five will, will, will never be in front of us?
You'll never have five.
Okay, all right, all right. So, uh, then, uh, I will, um, accept a motion to approve warrant number, uh, six in the amount of eight thousand, eighty dollars. And twenty-four cents. Do I have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to, to, uh, to approve warrant number six.
All right, John makes a motion, who is seconding that? Doug beats out Dana to the second, all right, do I have any discussion on the motion? And I, I don't know, Beth, if you had any, um, comments on this particular amount? The timing or the items?
Yeah, so I do that when I send, um, the entire warrant out to the board. The, the bill covered, you know, educational materials, like there's a lot of bills from Ingram, there are Book Jobber, Overdrive, it's ebooks that are available through the Libby platform. Um, Verizon, we're paying a small amount to Verizon for our fax lines and then we also have to pay Market Spark because we have voiceover IP. So we've got two small bills every month for fax, this, this week, it happened to be the Verizon account that came due. WB Mason, um, we're ordering office supplies, ProQuest is a database which accounts for our educational materials. That's ancestry dot com, which is available onsite for free to the public.
I totally need to use that, there's some amazing databases, I just have to point that out.
Yeah, uh, and then Amazon expenses, it could be, I could scroll down and look at the individual invoices, but, you know, so when I send it out and I say, let me know if you have questions. That's your opportunity to say, what'd you buy from Amazon?
And I just figured I'd give you the courtesy of just, you know, and, and yeah, thank you for.
Amazon would have been programming, it could have been office supply, you know, it, we always try to go, um, first following public procurement law. Through, um, COMBIES or Mass Higher Educational Consortium and then vendors that will invoice. As opposed to, you know, running to Walmart to buy a power strip, we're gonna go through our vendors that invoice and have things under warranty.
So I know, I appreciate those headers on the emails and you do send them out, I just figured if you had any additional comments. Any further comments, um, on the motion on this item, all right, hearing none, um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Declare the motion carried, all right. Warrant number seven, I will accept the motion to approve warrant number seven in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Carrie.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made and seconded.
There are some interesting things on this. Happy to point out, so one is that, um, museum passes, our friends generously give us ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, we use some of it for summer reading and some of it to pay for our museum pass program, so we renewed several museum passes and they, they write a check, it goes into the gift account. And then we get the invoice for the museum pass, we pay it out of the gift account. Um, we also paid Chandler Architectural, Architectural Products forty-five hundred dollars, that was for our door opener. Circuit board at the main entrance that failed way back in February, that was not covered under warranty or budgeted for as an expected item for the FY twenty-four budget. And the board had voted to pay for that, so that's like a big, big chunk of change. Uh, and everything else on here, again, it's educational materials, uh, pest control, which we do monthly, um, ebooks, New York Times invoice. Gas for our gas line for the stolen.
And, and just to, uh, double back on the, um, even though it wasn't mentioned, um. It's, it's been understood, if the public has any questions after the fact, it's been understood that even if the sources of, um. Funds were not mentioned in the motion, that we have the, the packet in front of us that lists the sources that total those figures in the motion. So, um, all right, do we have any other discussion on warrant article, uh, uh, number seven? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Declare the motion carried, all right, warrant number eight, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, approve warrant? Number eight in the amount of five thousand, thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, uh, with the sources listed in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number eight.
All right, John makes a motion.
I make a motion to second that.
All right, second motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously, okay, uh, moving on to, uh, I. Agenda item four, ongoing business grant updates, M, MPLCP, the building program and grant, Beth.
Um, so Lauren Stara, who's our construction specialist at the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Um, sent out a post-occupation survey, is that right? Post-occupational survey, because we've been in the building now for two years, um, to ask questions like, um, do you feel the building is adequately funded? Do you feel the building is too large or too small for your needs? What do you like, what don't you like, what do you wish had been done differently? Um, so I completed, uh, an eight-question survey and have about eight pages of data. Um, if the board would like to review it before I send it out, there are a lot of comments, like we asked for this in the building program and we didn't get it. We indicated that we needed staffing and we have, yeah, hundreds of hours that we are still down staffing. Uh, and I'm concerned we're not adequately staffing our building. We have lots of parking places and yet we're, we don't have parking on some nights when there's community programs, so. There's lots of things we love, but we also have some issues and I was forthcoming to Mass Board of Library Commissioners with those issues. We had, I think we had.
So was that MBLCP or MPLCP?
The Massachusetts, MBLC, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners administers a grant program. Called the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program. Grant, so we now have multiple grants, so we decided that we'd change on the agenda and just have a grant heading. MPLCP is our building program grant. We did have a brief building committee. We did have a brief building committee meeting to pay some outstanding bills. We still have about $50,000 in retainage because we haven't finished the HVAC commissioning yet. As I said, somebody came out this week to go through things like, does the schedule of occupancy work with, you know, the temperature controls coming on at the right time of day? You know, we don't want the hot air or cold air blowing on a Sunday when it's an unoccupied building.
So is that retainage all or nothing? In other words, do we release that piecemeal? Or when we're satisfied that everything's been done, we release the whole 50?
I think it can continue to be piecemeal if we have issues.
Okay.
And I think until we have a report from the commissioning agent, Colliers, that says, yep, your HVAC is good, then we can't pay that remaining retainage until we have that. So they also wanted to know if we were holding to the temperature guidelines set out in the contract. You know, are the thermostats that are locked, locked or unlocked? Is the control and programming and all of that adequate? How are you maintaining it? We do have Renad retained to do annual maintenance. They actually come in four times a year. What are the outstanding issues and what's the plan to take care of that? We still do have filters that we can't access and we're probably gonna hire, we're waiting for a quote from Renad to fix that because there's access panels for filters that are larger than the ceiling grid that's laid underneath them. So they can't get.
Now, Doug, being on the build committee, it wasn't entirely clear to me to what extent the building committee's current activities or even meetings if they're happening are limited to paying bills versus still being active in the discussions regarding remediating some of the issues that we've discussed here.
Yeah, most of those issues are being handled at the monthly, or the, is that weekly? The weekly Monday meetings that Beth attends.
Okay.
The building committee at this point is primarily just approving those bills or not approving the bills. Because occasionally we'll do get a bill that we do not approve because we feel like it either wasn't finished or, you know, wasn't ready to be invoiced.
So you're winding down your work. Who's the appointing authority? Was it? Was it the moderator?
I assume it's the moderator.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know what signified, what eventually dissolves the committee. Yes, Dana?
Who does Beth meet with weekly?
The construction team, which is Town Representation William Blake, the architect, project manager, Ron Palillo from DRA Architects, our owner's project manager, Mark Sullivan from DA Sullivan and Associates, Matthew Kay, Matt Kay is the construction project manager from the construction company CTA Construction, Cynthia Kaplan, who is our lead building consultant. She's retained by the architect, but she attends most of those meetings as well. And that's the team, myself.
Alright.
So, but it's a good question. I've been assuming when we finish that 50K retainage and approve that final bill, that's when they.
No more meetings. No more construction meetings, no more building committee meetings.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, I didn't know, you know, I just didn't know at what point, or, you know, let me rephrase that. I didn't know to what extent you folks were doing any activities there, being involved in any discussion other than paying bills.
Right, at this point, that's all it is.
So when's the last time you met?
On Monday, last Monday.
Oh, you met last Monday?
Yeah, we meet the beginning, first Monday of the year.
Okay, yeah, alright. Alright, Dana, did you have a question?
Yeah, so Beth, those meetings with those individuals, is that gonna stop once the money, once the bills are paid?
I think so. I mean, I think at that point we'll be done. We'll need a letter from the Towne of Grafton to say that construction is complete.
Okay.
You know, to their satisfaction. And then I also need a set of, I think it's called ASBILs, which is the final set of drawings for, because the point, you know, we had a couple of change orders and some things changed, so I also need the copy of ASBILs. So I've requested that twice now so that I can have it ready because I also need that letter and that set of drawings to give with my reimbursement form for my request for final payment next spring to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners.
So who are you waiting for that from?
Anyone who can log into Procore and find what I've asked for because I've explored it and I cannot. So it could come either from the OPM, the architect, or the construction manager to say, here's the final set of drawings. So I just wrote to all three of them and CCed William and Cynthia and asked for them again.
Who does the letter come from?
The letter would come from the Towne of Grafton.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, probably Evan.
Is that the, is that the final occupancy?
No, we already have final occupancy.
Okay, alright, okay.
Yeah, we do need, we do need a building inspection annually. So I'm compiling the documents for that now to prove that, you know, our fire extinguishers are up to date and the elevator and the fire hood, fire suppression hood in the kitchen and that that sort of thing's done. So I'm working on that paperwork.
Then, alright, moving on then to Mass Historic and the Kupola. And I guess you will be including the community preservation discussion in that?
Yeah.
Including what is August 3rd and then again, I guess, is another meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah, I didn't really have to do that.
So.
Yeah.
Could I actually ask one thing about the MPLCP? You mentioned the survey, could you send that out?
Say that again?
The survey, you mentioned that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to send it out. There may be things that I missed.
Okay.
What survey?
Uh, she mentioned.
The post-occupancy survey that Mass Board of Library Commissioners sent to me to complete. And their questions are, you know, is the building big enough?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right.
Is it right size? Is it adequately funded? Do you have enough of what you need? What would you have done differently?
Will they, will they, is this the final report? Will there be?
No, there is a separate final report that I have been also working on. And every time I correspond with Lauren Stara from MBLC, she says, you know, Beth, you don't have to do any more monthly reports if you just write the final narrative and financial report. And I say, as soon as we are done paying bills and our retainage is all gone, I will stop. And I'll finish the financial report. I will finish the final narrative. And then you will only hear from me again next April when I ask for my final payment.
Alright.
But until those, I feel like it's not done.
Yeah.
You know, any, like, if the Capital Campaign decides they want to continue to purchase things for the library, like, that's great and we would love that.
Do we keep these documents somewhere? Is it, I don't know if it's the shared, I know some things are.
Yeah, it's in shares.
It's a shared drive, but it's through the, the, our library website. But I guess it goes into a shared drive, like policies and things like that. It's not?
It's different, yeah, so.
Like, where do you, where do we house the, these type of surveys and final reports and things like that? Where are they?
It's on the Town Network for Town Employees. I can send out drafts if you want to see them, but you wouldn't have access, I don't think, as a non-Town employee. We put things on Google Drive, but we are changing to Office 365 and Outlook and moving away from Google Suite next week.
Okay. So what is on Google Suite that we could potentially lose if we don't download?
We've been working for the last year to make sure that anything that's in staff's work email, which could be lost, is migrated.
Right.
Because we still have retained a, like, a Gmail account independent of Towne of Grafton because we set one up online.
What about?
Like, our policy, our PDFs of policies from our website live on the Gmail account that's not associated with Towne of Grafton.
Okay.
Lots of staff.
And that was my main concern because it looked different. And so unlike the PDFs and things that are on the Town website, so, so does, do historic emails disappear?
No, no, we retain.
Because that's a, that's.
Yep.
Right, okay.
So we're trying to figure out what's going on with mine personally because my name changed. So when I log in as Galloway in Outlook, I have all my stuff.
Alright.
That's not my name anymore and my email has changed. So when I log in as Schreiber, I have nothing. I'm like, you guys need to port it over. So it's not lost.
Alright.
So, no, we follow.
Okay, that was my main concern, like, there's so much that is, yeah, alright.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm happy to, I do think that the final financial report for Mass Board of Library Commissioners, MPLCP grant, that's a mouthful, is on the Google Drive at the moment. And if you want to take a look at it, you can, I'd love for another pair of eyes. William Blake took some of that off my plate very helpfully. But I'm also interested in capturing not just the grant work, but the entire scope of the project. So I've nagged and they kindly provided Capital Campaign, like, what did you actually spend on signage and, you know, donor signage and the things that you've bought so that we can say how much the total project was? Because I'm supposed to provide that to the state.
Okay.
Yeah, what were the in-kind and contributing costs as well? So, and I, so that information's been provided as a lump sum, not as individual invoices, just to be clear.
So.
So Beth, if you don't do that report, we won't get that money.
No.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's, it's important, I just wanted.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think there's any surprise.
So Mass Historic Commission and the Kupola.
Yeah, so William Blake and I met with David King, the architect for the Kupola project. And we met with, oh gosh, migraine, I forget the gentleman's name, Ross Dekel, from Mass Historic Commission, who administered the grant. So we all sat down and he went over all the requirements for us. He says that we can't go out to bid to get the actual cost of the project and to hire somebody until we have secured all of the funding. So that's where CPC comes in. It turns out the grant didn't cover things like personnel, which architect is considered personnel, and it doesn't cover contingency. So we had gotten an estimate from the architect that Capital Campaign helped us to retain, David King. The professional estimate was that the scope of work to restore and preserve the Kupola was in the neighborhood of $218,228. So we wrote a grant application to Mass Historic, asking for half of that money. And then this board voted to pay the $109,140,000 to do half.
Now, was that, that was the capital vote?
That was 50%. That was trustees from State Aid.
Oh, State Aid.
Said they would pay half. Capital Campaign said they pay the $20,000 to do all the preliminary stuff to get the grant.
Okay.
And then we thought that Mass Historic would come in at half, the other half, $109,000.
And they did not.
But they didn't because they don't cover contingency and personnel and some of these things. So they offered $70,000, which is amazing, but there's still a gap, right, of almost $40,000. So I put in a submission for CPA funding, capital project funding, to CPC, Capital Project Committee.
Community, community preservation committee.
Preservation, yes, thank you.
I'll fill in the words.
Thank you.
Can I, can, without getting into?
I'm not this stupid, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but I'll, I'll ask, as a courtesy, ask whether you're okay to continue?
I'll do my best.
Alright, no, just let me know. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, we have, no, we have business in hand, but we also recognize that, you know, you're like the go-to person for a lot of this discussion. But by the same, by, by this, but also recognize, you know, accommodating anything, you know, we don't want you to push the limits just for the sake of pushing the limits.
If the headache gets unbearable, then I'll go.
Okay. Now, I have a, I have a history of migrants.
They're awful.
Yes.
Don't eat blue cheese with mold.
Alright.
It's a trigger for me.
Alright.
So my hope, though, was that we would petition CPC for money and not ask them just to make up that $40,000 gap, but instead can we do like a three-way split where the board doesn't have to spend $109,000 but could do like $74,000? That Mass Historic would do $70,000 and that CPC would do $74,000. I said, honestly, to CPC, I will be very happy with any amount between the $39,000 delta and the $74,000 I'm asking for.
Right.
Because I recognize there are other significant needs in town and we are fortunate to have these other funding sources.
Right.
But because I'm, when I first asked the board to help fund it, I said 50/50. You know, I'm trying to honor the requests that I made. So I had to go to a meeting August 3rd to present to CPC. They said it was the most thorough application packet they'd ever received. And this is on the heels of me asking for this money with a very vague word of mouth. It's going to cost $80,000 to fix two years ago and then saying that's not enough information, so.
No, I accompanied that. It was in this room right there, but she was in the hot seat. I was offering my moral support, but.
I think they knew that was just a casual conversation that you had.
Yeah.
Because how could they approve something without an estimate?
Of course.
And I think one of the issues, I know that, that there was a question and it seemed to be a split board on, the issue that they were stuck on was if this was a result of lack of maintenance, you know, how, how much of a valid request was this? And not to play hostile witness, but I, you had mentioned, and they were trying to, certain members of the CPC were really focusing on earlier comments you had made about maintenance. And honestly, I don't know, I mean, would, I mean, you're not an expert in those construction areas. So I, I think you may have surmised, or anyone could surmise that maintenance issues could cause structural integrity issues. But on the flip side, we don't know that for certain. And so, and so because you speculated, I think certain members of the CPC were really trying to stick you with that comment. And when we didn't discuss it, and I didn't step in, it didn't occur to me in the moment to step in and say, well, none of us is really equipped to determine that with certainty. And I forget which CPC member said, well, wait a minute. Anyone could, could say that any maintenance issue could result in integrity issues. And if you were going to give people a hard time about that, then none of these historic preservation or rehabilitation programs would ever get funded.
Absolutely.
And so, so it seemed like it was, it was almost like a, what are they, seven members? It was like a four to three, you know, it seemed like three to three and maybe they'd be a swing vote in our favor. But there's a meeting tomorrow night where, so if you could explain what tomorrow night's meeting is about?
So I would say that it felt like the August 23rd, sorry, August 3rd meeting was to go through the proposal and defend it and answer questions. And I believe they will be voting on what they will recommend town, get funded on a warrant article at town meeting tomorrow night. So they'll go through everybody's presentations again. If they have additional questions, somebody needs to be on hand to answer them. I'm only available by phone or Zoom tomorrow night, but Roger kindly agreed to it.
Right, and I will admit, and I will, I will admit in front of everyone that I don't know how prepared I am to answer off the cuff the, the questions on the, on the detail about what that is.
But.
But, but in the documentation, it's like David King, also David King did an excellent job of, here's what we are going to do. We need to put a boot where they put the sprinkler system into the new building. We need to cut down part of this and replace it. We need to re-solder and add new flashing inside the Kupola. Whatever wood we remove, we're going to restore.
So we, you have the understanding one way or the other, whether tomorrow night's vote may not only be about the actual details that are in the original application and then, I guess, the amendments and then the drawings. But also from a procedural standpoint, it's possible that one or more members may, in their vote, discuss funding a lesser amount.
Yes.
And then, and so, I don't know if I can speak for the board or you to, to agree to a certain figure, you know, I mean, I would, I would want the figure that we requested.
Yes, but again, our gap is $39,000 and change. So if they come back with a, we'll give you $40,000, our needs are met. One of the things that Capital Campaign members should be aware that they asked for is I have a letter of, you know, support from Capital Campaigns saying that you would fund up to $20,000 for work on the project. And you've spent, I know there's been at least one invoice for David. His original proposal was his architectural oversight for the whole process, for the preliminary drawings, for meeting with MHC. And then during the process, he also had wanted to rent a crane and possibly wrap the Kupola. And after going up there, determined, we actually don't need to do that. So we saved a little bit of money. However, there is no built-in contingency money. So CPC wanted us to say, well, Capital Campaign said they give us $20,000 and we need to see that amount reflected, not the $13,000 that was part of the original preliminary proposal.
Right.
So I revised it and made it clear that it was contingency money.
Because I know, I know that that was, that $7,000 delta was a sticking point to some matters.
So I revised it. They also felt that if we came in under budget, they would want to make sure that every funder involved got a, got money back if there was money left over and not just any one particular funding.
And, and, and I think the committee, the CPC made it clear And 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 I think the uh, the committee, the CPC made it clear that part of the CPC rules are are that. Other monies are spent first and then the CPC monies are spent at the end.
Yeah, and and if we wanna argue about like CPC doesn't pay for painting, I think that's fine. There's other money. That can pay for painting. I don't know that invoices will be broken down that way.
And you know what the thing is that I'll. Calling you in a moment. I will, I will say that th- this is a town building used by the town. That we, you know, from a philosophical standpoint, although CPC, CPC monies. CPA monies through CPC um, aren't necessarily um. There are eligible projects such as the Grafton Historical Society as a nonprofit, Lions Club. Uh, and and others, Grafton Land Trust, that are not town-owned, that are eligible for CPC funds that we've. Um, funded to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And 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 I'm not maligning those efforts. Or that those are allowed expenses, but um. Kind of um, I'm kind of taken aback by. How um, certain committees and even town meeting, they'll, they'll raise their hands and vote for. Two hundred thousand dollars about any debate. And then when you start talking about fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. People get stuck in the weeds. And and I was thinking that this, this would be um. Would not cause as much discussion at that August third meeting as it did. Um, but, and so I'm I'm saying that in in light of the fact that. I may be short on being able to answer some of the detailed questions that may be put forth, but I'll be there tomorrow night.
Thank you.
All right, and so, um. And then I don't know, because there are microphones here, it's possible that. I don't know if you can quote-unquote call in, but if I were to put your. If I were to put you on the phone.
Call a friend.
Call a friend. And and then, and and if it's part, and I'm hoping maybe Bill can answer this, I don't know, um, about, you know, being on the mic. You know, that that everyone, the meeting and anyone that on the playback could hear that discussion, so. Um, so if if need be, will you be there to rescue me tomorrow night?
I am available.
Yes.
Is it possible they'll come back and and approve less than the forty K?
Absolutely. Um, I also think they could approve the full amount I asked for, and we could go to town meeting and it could fail on the town meeting floor. In which case, if we can't come up with that gap of about seventy-four thousand dollars, a little more. Um, then we either have to find the money elsewhere or say to Mass Historic Commission, thank you so much. Here, we are gonna return the seventy thousand dollars. We cannot meet the funding.
Those, those funding, those uh, requests for project funding through CPC. Um, one of the things is that, yeah, that they really look highly upon those projects where we leverage other monies. And it was like two-thirds of monies are leveraged from other sources. And so, I I think that would hold strong. And the fact that this is, this is not routine maintenance as a rehab project, but what were you?
I don't, do people know what co- what CPA funding goes to and how it comes from? It's a, it's part of the um, we pay a fee, right? It's kind of like a.
The property surtax.
Property surtax, so. And then it it can go to recreational restoration. Historical res- restoration, um, land preservation, and I think recreation.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay, affordable housing.
Historic preservation, um, recreation, open space, um, affordable housing. So.
And then a lot of the buildings in town have been given grants, and that's why they've succeeded. Didn't we get? Did the library get any other grants in the past from the CP- CPC?
I don't remember if we had some CPC money, because it was just before I came on board ten years ago. There might have been some with.
I think we did get some.
Yeah, because.
I think Hilding did, because I remember telling him, you, we need to get, we need to present it, and I think it was for the cupola.
Um, CPC funding helped us restore the front doors that faced the common. A few years ago, and I think also our columns out front too. So, we've gone to them.
So I will let everyone know what the outcome is tomorrow night, and I will gladly put you on speakerphone and let. Let the chair know in advance that that may be the case. Um, all right, FY twenty-three.
What I was gonna say quickly, I know you said you return money. So you know, some, often happens in a grant round. Like, a- after the monies give, every, you know, after the grant round is finished and they give out the money. The organizations that didn't use the money, often you'll get, you'll get, you've been funded money, you'll get money, you'll get additional money.
That's a possibility too.
Cause that happened to, that happened to.
Because there are other projects that have to do the same thing that we're going to do, and if they don't get funding.
So then, then I guess you'd have to divide it among the three or the four. We'll talk about it anyway.
All right, FY twenty-three budget update. Are we still on, I I know that there were some emails and there was the whole. The the whole double payment, not under, not over budget, but double payment and it had to do with an accounting system.
Yeah.
Transfer.
Paying statements instead of invoices. Um, we also, uh, for the last two years, we've had a zero, excuse me. Zero dollar amount in our program budget, our program account. And this year, we have some money in the program account, but the agreement had been, we're gonna pay for some programming out of the gift account and grants and other things. And both Eileen and I missed that we paid for program expenses on a zero dollar account. Which I didn't think that the town accounting system should have let us do. But it did, so that's part of the reason we were negative in the last fiscal year and, you know, Eileen con- confided that to me a week or two ago. You know, part of the other reason we were under is because we accidentally approved things from an account.
So, so who caught that? Did she do a sort of internal audit?
After the fact, yeah.
All right, so let me ask you this. Did the vendor, was the vendor surprised that they got paid twice? Would they have caught it?
So, so here's the, yeah, so the the vendor Ingram is separate, vendor, the vendor Ingram is from our book budget. They didn't catch it until somewhere near the end of the year, as we were saying, like. Where, what are all these bills coming from? Wait a minute, we paid these. And they said, oh, wait, you did. So. The bottom line is, we got a check for nine thousand dollars from Ingram, the book vendor. For things that we double paid because of their switch over and change in invoicing.
So you actually have since received a check because you recently said that you were anticipating.
We were, I was anticipating about six thousand, nine hundred dollars, and it was for over nine, nine thousand dollars. So we're just gonna put that back in state aid.
Okay, because it originally came from state aid.
Right, we had asked, yeah, to appropriate almost ten thousand dollars to balance out the FY twenty-three budget. I may have more information at our October meeting because I've just finished the statistical heiress report. And now the financial piece is gonna be due next, where once the books are finally fully closed for twenty.
So I signed off on that, um, as was required by the state, and so, um, you hadn't distributed that to the board yet.
I was gonna do it this week, but we had a flood.
Right, and so i- it's a, it's a massive questionnaire. I, you've probably seen.
Forty pages.
Yeah, how many?
Forty pages.
And so you've seen those heiress reports, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and so you're saying that there's another, uh, another one that's financial?
Yeah, because there's, remember, there's two things that they're looking for. This is to like prove our accountability for the state aid checks that we get twice a year. So they're looking to make sure we're open enough hours, that the director has a master's degree, uh, and that, so that's like the statistical piece. Um, ours is really important. And then the financial pieces, did you spend at least thirteen percent of your budget on educational materials for the public?
And one of the things I wanted to mention is that as I was looking at the, the sort of strata of the percentages. It's my understanding that fifteen to twenty-five thousand in in uh, population or whatever we are in. It's actually fifteen percent, not thirteen.
Here's why it's different.
Okay, please.
Um, we discovered that if we opened, we were open fifty-eight hours a week. Which was the requirement for our population at fifteen percent materials expenditure. But we learned if we added two hours and were open above and beyond what they expected for the population, if we opened sixty, six-zero hours a week. That we could reduce the educational material requirement to just thirteen percent and save a significant amount of money. Which we could then put into staffing to keep the building open.
So there's the footnote that I didn't see. Cause I was like, we, how did fifteen become thirteen? Okay, all right.
That's why. We could go back at any time.
Okay.
Yeah, also, it it could be that, given um, the generosity of Capital Campaign and materials that they have purchased. Through the construction project that count toward educational materials, like the piano, which the public can use.
Right.
That may surpass us over the fifteen percent.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I expect that it will.
All right, was that the only FY twenty-three item?
That's, I think so.
All right, and let's move on to FY twenty-four.
FY twenty-four, we are still in the early stages of the budget. Um, things look pretty good. I am a little anxious already about um. Office expenses, cause we have a lot of needs. Um, for example, we're tired of people crawling around on the floor to plug in their computers in the tutor rooms. Because when they design the building, there's a counter, and then the floor outlet is underneath the counter.
Okay.
Instead of above, where the, so you can plug it. So I just asked Debbie to buy power strips.
Okay.
Um, we bought some heavy-duty surge protectors to make sure that all of our electronics are on surge protectors.
Okay.
So I'm keeping an eye on that line. And then, um, we've had a revolving materials account. Where uh, people paid into that account to buy earbuds or headphones or zip drives and to pay for their printing. And then in the past, we drew on that account to pay for the copier lease and the toner. And any maintenance for those, the Xerox, we have two Xerox machines. So our anticipation was, we had like thirty thousand dollars or something in that account. We thought that it would cover the three-year contract for two copiers. However, then we were closed for the pandemic and construction. So we haven't been taking in enough money to pay for the expense of the copier.
So you're saying that's a town revolving account?
It's a town revolving account.
What's the cap on, I know these revolving accounts have caps on them.
I think it's ten thousand dollars. They had let us surpass it. But it's now down to about twenty-nine, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. And we still have almost a year's worth of Xerox leases to pay for, when we're not taking in any money into this account anymore, cause people are not printing any.
Okay.
So, so.
Yeah, so. So my question is, um. What sort of usage are we getting on two copiers and can we reduce it to one?
We, I don't think that we can get out of the lease. I think we're stuck in a linear lease. But yes. Yes, we can just buy a printer.
I think that would be um, something we should look at and then just reduce it to one if if we're not, you know, getting used to it both.
Uh, both of them on the same lease cycle and when is that?
Um. When did we, I think it's next July. I think we have another four-year almost.
Okay.
If if we go down to one, um, and it breaks, do we have other small printers that we can use? Cause I I would be nervous to have one, only one printer for the whole library.
Yeah, that's. Sure, so if if something is leased and it breaks, I would assume the company would bring us a replacement.
So.
And it wouldn't be.
That's the printer that everybody in the library uses?
So it's really not, like, we have individual printers all throughout the building. It is the only public access printer and fax machine. We've got a second printer that we can fax from at the moment, and actually, it's not clear to me we even need two fax lines anymore. We, again. Remember that a lot of this was planned pre-pandemic.
That's right.
And now, like, you can just do a digital signature for a lot of documents. There's DocuSign. People just aren't printing and faxing in the same way that we had anticipated when we wrote the building program in twenty sixteen. Um, and post-pandemic. So it's not like there's only one option. Also, because we currently do have a second one, like if if the Xerox printer, copier, fax scanner upstairs goes down. IT can probably even remotely redirect everything to the second Xerox, which is currently housed in the children's. Um, workroom downstairs. The original intent had been to have a Xerox for the public. On the first floor in the children's program room and one upstairs for the public by borrower services. But um, where it was designed to be on the building schematic did not line up with where we needed the. Phone and ethernet lines on the drawing. So that's why it got put in the children's program room. And that's where it has remained because we haven't remediated putting it where it's actually designed to go.
So where was it designed to go again?
So it was supposed to be on the col- if you walk in in the children's room, there's a column. And there's like one or two public computers and there might be a temporary printer at the moment, but that's where it was supposed to be. That's a wifi networked printer that doesn't need any, anything besides electrical. But the Xerox needs a a plug um, to be connected to the network. So. Yeah, this was again, like no.
Now then, if it's in that room.
Well, staff use it to photocopy, although again. Five years ago, um, in May, we were making like thr- two or three thousand summer reading program packets. And there were eight pages, eighteen by seventeen folded paper, and distributing them to Grafton Public Schools to promote our summer reading program. But across town, as we try to become more green and save paper and use recycled paper, which is more expensive, we're like, here's the QR code. Go to our calendar, you know, we, we're not gonna print in those massive ways anymore either. And that's just, you know, again, something that's changed in the last.
So any other FY twenty-four use, as we're starting to talk about IT?
I think what I'm trying to say is I may be coming back to this board to say, we've now expended the rest of the twenty-five hundred remaining. We're not taking in enough from printing and faxing costs to sustain the six to eight hundred dollar copier. Lease bill for the two copiers, and we will need to pay it.
How frequently is that, six or eight hundred?
It's, it's between six and eight hundred a month, depends on usage. So we pay a base contract for the lease of the two machines and the maintenance. And then if we use up paper or toner, like, then there's additional charges.
What's the yearly termination fee?
I can find that out.
That would be interesting, if the early termination is. Yeah, what the, what the delta is on that, you know, I mean. All right.
Yeah.
I was gonna address Dana's issue about the service, um, the service calls they usually get someone out the next day.
Oh, good.
They did the last time I called them.
All right, cool. All right, then, all right, um, all right, we will cross our fingers that you don't need to come to us, but if you do, it won't be a surprise. All right. And then we'll just, yeah.
I mean, I have three months' worth of money left.
Okay.
And I don't think we're gonna get that much, we're not gonna take in six hundred dollars in printing next month.
We're gonna expect that. So you're talking about the current, it's, this is current.
Yeah, to finish, yeah, to finish up. And again, this isn't like a, a town budgeted item, this is a revolving account when I.
Yeah, because we just started the cycle, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, so. It probable that it's, you won't, you will be coming back.
Yes, and and I would say for FY twenty-five. The cost of the copier lease should be in contracted services in the town budget. And no longer dependent on revolving accounts or state aid. That would be my intention.
All right, IT update. And the only reason I'm kind of sounding like I'm rushing to. Let it say twenty-five and I know that. You know, we s- uh, at the top of the meeting, you know, if we'd never had the flood, we'd be further down in the agenda, that's all.
Um, the IT update is that we are, we are changing over absolutely to um, Microsoft Office three sixty-five and Outlook. Um, probably by next Monday. So staff have been aware that this is coming for the last year. I have no idea, maybe.
You will, if if you used, you will love it.
I hope.
Are we, so we're absolutely sure of no data loss because?
We're gonna, yeah, because there's gonna be at least a month where we have both systems up and running.
Okay.
Still, I've been told.
All right, yes.
I've, I've been involved in a lot of the migrations. These migrations and it all just kind of moves from one system to the other. You get a report and it says if there's errors. So if there's any data loss, I'm sure whoever's doing the migration will take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, IT is very responsive of late, which is really great. They got um, our new employee set up with email, with a login. And uh, we deployed a computer to Sean, um, in a very timely manner. Um, I thought that I accidentally saved over a document and lost changes that I needed, and then I got a quick tutorial. Uh, like right from my computer on, you can go to any document and go back to the save point, and they are saving like. Our IT people are nodding, like every three hours. So if you mess it up, it's always recoverable.
So we have an IT committee too, right? Still, do we?
For the town, I'm not aware. I've never been involved with it. Yeah, we have contracted IT from CMD, the town administrator made that decision. We do have additional support for the library. So they have like, they're always here, I think, on Tuesday. And then we get an additional check-in on Thursday, which is really.
What an improvement.
Yeah. And Jon- Jonathan, we see Jo- a guy named Jonathan most of the time. He's great, Mark is great.
Did the challenges with the multi-factor authentication get resolved?
That is a great question. Um, I have it installed on my phone and I'm using it and I don't have any issue with it, but staff have. So it has not been brought back to my attention and there has not been a proposed solution. So I'm waiting to hear. Um, of note, Ingram, which is our book vendor, primary book, book vendor, is now requiring remote authentication. But you have the option, I think, to do text or email. And for whatever reason, it doesn't sound like Microsoft has that option.
Uh, it does. You can get an email, I believe.
I will advocate for that. I'll check in.
Um, I could be wrong. Cause everybody uses text or uh, or an authentication app.
Okay, um, are we ready to move on to Grafton Public Library Capital Campaign Dana and Doug?
Can, can I just ask, could I be added to that too? Cause I know like, you can give the. I'm on the Capital Campaign too.
That was me, I didn't know who was gonna be presenting. So if you wanted to let me know who.
Last month I.
Seven years on it.
Oh, yeah. Honestly, I think it should just be Dana, like just one person.
It's usually one person.
manages the update.
Yeah, I hadn't heard.
There, you can ask one of us.
Okay, that, that, that works too.
All right, so who, who, who wants to take this?
I'll take it. And then if anyone, if Doug wants to chime in, he can. So right now, we're, we're trying to wind down. So um, we met the, we met um, yesterday and um, basically what we're working on right now. It's just finishing projects. There's, one of them was the, was um, doing some ma- some maintenance work in the garden. And then, and then doing some, you know, some new improvements. So that is supposed to start um, next week.
Okay.
And we haven't done, um, there, we haven't done anything on the back. You know, we haven't, there's, there's minimal plan for the back of the library. The only thing that might be planned would be um, moving plants that need shade. We have some plants that um, require shade that aren't doing well in the front, that we're gonna move, we're gonna move to the back. So we'll talk to somebody about that. Um, so, so we're, we're working on that. And the other thing is, we did a proposal, I, we made a proposal for the community beds. We've been working on this, I guess, for a couple of months. I met with, I met with Beth, met with um, Carrie, Doug, the committee met. So what we thought was the, the easiest thing, I don't know if you've been out and s- seen them. Um, they didn't, um, actually, it wasn't exactly what we thought was gonna happen, was gonna be made. So we're dealing with what we have, but it's not, it's, you know, we can do it. There's a stone wall and then there's one large. It looks like a, there's one li- like a large planting place. It's like sixteen by six feet, a little bit bigger than that. So what we're gonna do with that is um, we were, we wanted raised beds, so we, so we're, we're basically ordering, ordering a raised bed. And then we're gonna have, it's gonna be made out of cedar, it'll be filled with dirt, and then. The librarian, there's a librarian who's gonna be in charge of that, who wants to be in charge of it, I believe. We'll see.
Librarian wants to do a program with teenagers.
Okay, she wants to do a program with teenagers. So now she has that. And then what we decided, since we don't really, we thought the other three, which as you go up the hill gets smaller. We're gonna basically clean them up, um, put good dirt in there and we, and then put mulch and have some perennials. That way, if we have a librarian or people or somehow someone says, hey, we want more space. All we do is move a perennial somewhere else and plants die and it's, so that, we felt that was a good approach. So that's what we're gonna be doing. And also, we're gonna order, um, there is a planter that's on wheels and it's made, it's handicapped accessible. So a wheelchair can fit underneath it and there's like a shelf. You know, there's a real planter where they can plant. And then there's another one that we may, that we were considering, which is um, it's raised. But it's done in such a way that you could, you could sit on a seat and do it. So we, yeah, and do gardening. So we thought that could help for someone who doesn't, who can't really stand up for long hours. So that's what we're planning there. And um, so that's all underway. The committee approved it, so we're gonna start working on that. Um, right now, we, we're also, we, well, we were gonna have a donor party Oc- October fourteen. So I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Um, if we have to move it, we will. I guess we'll make a decision on that. And then um, we're finalizing some plaques that have to be done. Almost all of them are done. We had one down for the Willard Clock, uh, Willard Clock and House Museum to thank them. So that's been, I have, that should be finished. So that's in production and we're gonna put that by the clock, by the clock and an easel on a shelf. So if you see the clock, you'll see that and it doesn't really say anything about what's being there. And um, the curator's wanted it phrased in such a way so that they could, you know, they wanna swap, they wanna swap things out. So that was good. So we're, that's it, that's it. And then we're working on also the project for the, the lighting. Um, we're gonna wait on that because um, you know, all the things that's happening, but we found, I think, Doug probably discussed it. We found a good, a good solution that's inexpensive and portable. So we're delighted. You probably talked about that last week?
I don't remember.
Well, anyway, we talked to Beth about it. She saw it too.
We didn't talk about the lighting last month, I don't.
And it's not, so we'll, we can present it when we get closer. We can, we're not gonna do anything. It's like, it's like, it's something that um. Carrie and I saw at a restaurant in Hopkinton. And we, it's basically, if there's poles, they can go into like a planter. And then you, you know, you you can, you put the, put the wires in between.
It's really pretty.
There's no touching, we don't touch the building.
Yeah.
So that's what we light. Um, so we will get that up. It's just that with all the work there. Also, we've been working really hard. Doug's been diligently and other people have been working, getting all those, all the furniture done and that is finished. Um, I don't know if they're arranged exactly the way we want them, but that's okay. We'll, we'll get there. And then we're also, we have some um musical instruments, we're calling them, that are gonna be installed outside. And they're gonna be in the area, that that flooded area. It's gonna be close to the amphitheater. So we're, we're gonna delay that. And um also the other thing in the front of the, in the front where the teen patio is, we have two concrete, um, there's chess or. Or um checkerboard, the checker tables. There's like a s- a stool and then a concrete table and they'll be permanent. So those, we have them now and I think Doug is working with D P D, D D P W to, to like move them and put them where we want.
Alright, cool.
And then there's like, I know there's some issues that have come up and we, we'll take care of that. Like, we found like some, you know, like. Piece of the stone wall broke off. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. We talked to Doug and we'll get that going. So that's about, that's what we're working on now.
Thanks for all of the initiatives. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Roger, I read a question for Dana.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
So um, you mentioned lighting in in that uh, that sparked um something that I think was in the, in the yes, no log. Um, the community uh room. Um, so a lot of the programs, uh especially anything that needs a lot of lighting, like art programs and whatnot, I'm sure a lot of us. Um, are familiar with this. Is this something that's appropriate for the capital campaign to address?
Yeah, actually, I did mention that, but um I think we did, it hasn't been brought up, but we can bring it forward. I talked to one of the librarians who told me that. The lighting in the community room is really, they don't think it's adequate. I did mention it to Doug cause he's on the building committee, so.
Yeah.
I think we can review it and figure out, but we can do things like that. I mean, like the, we did things like um. Basically Beth needed more outlets in the library because they didn't really put enough. So we said, we want you to be efficient. So we, you know, we ha- we paid for the electrician and all that.
Thank you.
But so you're saying like the drop ceiling lighting is just not sufficient?
Yeah, so this is an example of something that is going, is in my post occupancy survey, which is the building program specified. Different types of lighting for different tasks, including track lighting in the community room, but it was never installed or added. Um, and the children's room is also significantly dark, um especially away from the windows in the back where the nonfiction is. And the nursing room and the tutor room, um and within the stacks. And we, I worked with the electrician who installed it. There's an app, like you can actually dim the lights, but they are up as bright as they can go. Um, so what we actually need is more cans, more lights installed in the ceiling to add brightness to these areas so that you can see. So yeah, it's not a, it's not a new issue. We, we realized that, I think, when we had our first Grafton celebrates the holidays and we're trying to, you know, three o'clock. On a winter afternoon, do crafts and you re- you really can't see very well. There's also an issue in the community room. With uh, you can dim the lights and that's helpful if you're gonna show a movie, but if you're doing a presentation and you want the speaker who's talking to be lit. And also not have glare on the screen, you can't do those two things at the same time. Either. The lights are on and the speaker's illuminated and there's backwash from the lights on the projection screen. Or you turn off the lights, you can see the slides and the speaker is standing in the dark. So this was just not oversight in terms of. You know, I was very specific with the needs and usages, potential usages for the room and it was just disregarded. And it wasn't until.
So you'll be amazed how many issues there are in conference rooms across the world like that, but yeah.
Wasn't until we occupied.
Be solved.
Well, the first one that you said, so what's happening is you were saying, you said that, can you just?
Yeah, the word for it from the electrician is you need more cans and that's these, these holes, but this is a can with a light hole in it. So the, you know, the wiring is there.
So you want the presentation to be, that needs to be lit as well as the individual that's speaking.
Uh, yeah.
But for the track, yeah.
When we get uh the art rail up and are gonna have a gallery space in there, which is like a long-term thing. We have art display policy, right, on the list for tonight? Um, like that, there should be a way to light a separate set of lights to spotlight any artwork that's hung around the room in that space too. We also asked for under cabinet task lighting in places where there's um cabinetry up on the walls. Um, like in the teen program, not in the teen program, in the children's program room and the children's work room. So that you have lighting on your counter where you have a work surface.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so um, moving on to friends, membership and update, Carrie.
So the friends were ex- very excited about the book sale. Um, and we, it's so over time with the various book sales, um, you know, kind of learned, you know, how to prepare for the book sales. And um, a two-week window to collect the books to prevent having to move the books multiple times is really desired. So, so the flooding, like the timing is very challenging, um, because we were anticipating. The, the, sorry, the friends were anticipating um that um books would start to be collected on the twenty eighth and that's what we've kind of communicated to folks. But um, we're, we're counting our blessings that the books were not in there when the flooding happened. Because if we had like books under the table like that, and just moving all that would have been a nightmare. So we're very appreciative about that. But if, so I haven't updated any of the postings because I, like you were saying, don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
And it's not like, you know, like, so the event itself is scheduled for um September ninth and tenth, the actual book sale. The collection of the books, you know, for the donations, the call for donations is supposed to start this Monday, August twenty eighth. So if it's a couple of days later, it's probably okay, but if it's two weeks, then. And then the thing is that we really lose the window because the room isn't available for two weeks.
Till like November.
Because even October, like, uh, Debbie looked at the calendar and the thing is like, if we, like October sixteenth is available, well, then that's Halloween. So we're not gonna do a book sale, you know, that's Halloween. So, so we will, we will remain. You know, cautiously optimistic and hope, you know, that that works. Um, the friends haven't met formally. Uh, Mary Kay's, you know, on, you know, um, sorry, Mary is uh um in Europe, so we haven't, we haven't met yet, but we were just really. Hoping that things, you know, um, that the room, that, well, the most important thing is that um, that. Serve safe comes and says it's okay and you know, that the, there aren't any issues with the electrical, that it's a safe environment for. Staff and friends and volunteers in the public, you know, so that's number one. And then if we're able to do the book sale, wonderful. If not, we'll just reschedule it. The, the other thing for the friends is um, they're um, are working on getting a vending machine for the friends corner. Um, so the work, you're trying to work with the vendor, so that's um, definitely working on that as well.
Alright, cool.
Well, that, can I ask, will it be coin op or um debit card or both or phone? Like, how will people pay? Are you able to have multi ways for them to pay? Cause not a lot of people have cash and I'm concerned that making change at the desks could really be.
So Jackie Dilman was working with the vendor on that, so um, there's no contract yet. It was just being kind of preliminary. Um, so I'm sure before anything signed, you know, there'll be more details, but um, but that's, you know, something that's being worked on. It's not ready.
And I'll, and I'll say tongue in cheek, if people really need change, Campbelllet Farms is right around the corner. So, I mean, and they have an A T M too.
Yeah.
Hopefully it would have a credit card.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully it has a credit card.
No, it should.
I think it's, it'll be a mono.
Yeah, all of these, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, very few people accept cash these days, but, yeah. That'd be a welcome addition, as long as it's not quote-unquote greasy or messy food.
Well, that was, well, just, just the point of order.
Yeah.
We're gonna, if we're going at this pace, we won't be able to get to uh policy approvals. We'll have to figure out what we want to.
And here, here's the thing, I, after the friends, I was actually going to address that with you because. I know that you're chair of the policy subcommittee. And you, you folks on policy subcommittee do a ton of work in really having new meetings. Pouring through all of this with some significant amount of legwork and detail. And I'm finding that as I've looked at the policies and everything like that, my. Things that I've highlighted would, would take a decent amount of comment. Not that I'm gonna pick it apart. Um, left, right and side, but I'm simply saying that I would anticipate that. Looking at the amount of stuff that we have in front of us on policy, I don't know what your general update is, but looking at the two, the two policies in front of us. Uh, would generate a significant amount of discussion that may require. Or benefit from a workshop meeting or an ano- another meeting. I'm finding that as an extension of a department meeting once a month. That we're finding ourselves halfway through our agenda. I wouldn't say we're, we're being chatterboxes. I think we're digging into many things. That having only one meeting a month, I'm not saying we should have multiple meetings every month. But I think in order to play catch up, especially with policy too, um, would probably require another meeting. I don't know what your thoughts are. I.
So i- are we talking about policy?
I, I'm just talking about the amount of time that I think, I mean, just knowing how much time we spend on each of these items that we discussed already. Um, two sizable policy documents to discuss those two and dig in.
So, so that's not the intention of the, uh, is, is this the first policy that we've kind of um?
I think for me.
Approve for.
I think for, for me.
New board?
For me.
Yeah, so uh, at this point, if, if, if the members of this committee feel it's not ready. Then certainly the changes that you guys um come up with can go back to the subcommittee. And we can table it, incorporate those changes. Those people who feel that they're not ready yet can attend. Policy subcommittee meetings. We can make those changes, uh, go back to legal, um, get the um. The union to re- review it as well. And we'll have to just bring it to the, the, the board at another date.
And the thing is like for me individually, I, I'm not saying that something is necessarily ready, but a lot of times there'll be things that I've noticed that I've underlined. That are simply questions of clarification. It's not that I necessarily don't think that that should or shouldn't be in there. But it's like, well, what does this mean? Or how does this work in, in harmony with this other section or, or this other policy? And so.
Yeah, so if there's significant deliberation we're anticipating, then I would say uh table this and maybe have a special meeting.
Okay.
Because we don't have enough time to do that sort of deliberation tonight.
And, and I just wanna be clear that.
Say something?
Sure.
Um. I, I get, they're, they are really detailed, but I mean, generally, we're to have read, we're supposed to have read, read, we've read them.
Right.
And then if we have comments, we comment. So I don't know what we're talking about. There's gonna be a lot of comments. Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I think that.
Because maybe we could start on one if possible. I don't know.
I mean, we, we, while we have, we have three, ongoing business, we have three items, we have five.
Okay.
Six funding requests on the new business.
We have like fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, in other words.
Alright.
I mean, I don't think we've, we've basically said that we stop, s- stop hard at two hours, but in light of, you know, Beth's comments of her own.
Yeah, she's not well.
Yeah, and, and that.
I, I think, I think we need to wrap up it.
I think it's fine. It's fine. Let's wrap it up.
Can Erin just comment? Like, these policies that you've brought to us, the committee's brought to us, they've already been approved by legal?
Yes.
Or, right, so you, the intent is that this has already been vetted.
Right.
Yeah, it's been approved by the, um, uh, we've got a, we've gone back and forth with the union a couple of times, whether it's, you know. Uh, worthy of their contract negotiation, additional responsibilities and whatnot. So these ones are probably about six months' worth of work, maybe more.
So.
And, and then, and then both poli- there, I shouldn't say, there are events coming up that rely on this approval of these policies?
Well.
Well.
Yes.
Kind of.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, and I th- the art exhibit and display policy, I think. That's important because people have been thinking about, they're wanting, that we gotta come up with policy because people wanna have things hung up.
And I'm simply saying that it's been my experience, just in the few months of being on the, on a member of the Board of Trustees. That even those things which seem to be routine can generate fifteen minutes of discussion. When you multiply that by three. We're, we're at another forty-five minutes. And so I, I wanna rubber.
I've been keeping track of, of how long we talk about certain items on the agenda.
And I, I think too, they've been well vent- vetted. So I think we have to keep that in mind and that the, they've been approved by the union. And by legal, so I think we can discuss them, but I guess. I don't know, I get, well, I guess the only, I guess if, I guess it should, well, if it's a minor thing, then um, I think.
But when.
What I'm saying is minor things can generate lots of.
Why don't we talk about the specifics then? So there's two policies, right? There's the art exhibit and display policy, which is, I think. What we're referring to when we're talking about something that is time sensitive. Do we need to get that approved?
So I would almost say that us partnering with the Smallstones Festival of the Arts to do a unique event where they're bringing in their own equipment. And staffing to kind of run an event on our site, isn't contingent on approval of art exhibit and display policy. I think the intent of that particular policy is such and such artist has sculpture or photographs to hang and they wanna do a month-long exhibit.
That's not what I meant. I just thought that would generate a lot of interest. I understand. It's nothing to do with that.
Time.
And, and food and beverage, like we already have food and beverage in the library.
Hold on, one at a time.
Okay. Can I just make a point? So it's ten minutes to nine. We have a member of the public that's here.
And I didn't know whether you, what's your name again? I forgot.
Karen.
See Karen, I, we hadn't discussed on, on the top of the meeting whether you had any comments about anything or specific items that you wished to address. Otherwise I could have put you way at the top of the meeting. Oh, okay. Alright.
Okay.
Um, so, um, were you finished with the friends update?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. Um, so, um. Not to hop around too much, but going back to the agenda item, um, I mean, are we in agreement that we are not up against a quick deadline on the art policy? And that, um, and, and I, I just wanna make it perfectly clear that, um. To table this to a separate meeting, I, I, I just don't wanna start rub, for me personally, rubber stamping things because it was vetted out by other people. We're ultimately responsible for, um, you know, uh.
I agree that, I'm, you know, that's not what I was saying, but they, but they have worked on it for six.
Oh, no, I know that. I know that.
So I think you're suggesting, let's just have a, uh, let's have another meeting if that, if we think we need that. Because what I'm thinking, the next meeting we have, these should be at the top of the agenda.
Right.
I don't know how the, I don't know how it's worked. So if that's not possible.
Or just have a timed meeting that just addresses policy, just for everyone's.
Fine with that.
Even, even if, even if we agree to do it Zoom, if, if it worked, I don't know. Um, but um, alright, then moving on, ongoing business four G. I put this as a placeholder, Director of Allen Contract. I'm still working on the wording of um, those documents that I discussed last month. I, I will have. I'm still working on the wording of um those documents that I discussed last month. I I will have. Info in front of you within the next thirty days. Um, I looked at multiple towns and found that um there's a hodgepodge of wording. That um that a lot of it is very useful. Some towns are more comprehensive than other towns in what they put in a contract. Now, I know that you have not had an eval by the town administrator, which is called for in the town charter, but. Anticipating that he would be looking for our input, I will get a document that were downloaded. It was either from um MBLC or Mass Library Association that is a template for. A Board of Library Trustees eval of their director. And that he would want to be looking at that before doing his eval, okay? And so I I would hope that um that we could tackle that soon. Um, and agree on a date that we would either address that in a regular meeting or. Or maybe discuss policy and director eval in the same meeting. Um, because a director eval is necessarily done in a public setting, um, in a public meeting. Um, just like the s- select board, um, it's not done in executive session, uh, according to the open meeting law, just like. Um, the uh town administrator eval by the select board is done, you know, uh.
You're saying i- is it a public meeting or it's in an executive?
No, it is in a public meeting, not in executive session. Um, so, um.
Can I just ask a question? So you.
Yeah.
There, so you've found something that you think would be good for us.
I I I.
To use to evaluate.
I found.
Beth and all, you know, and Beth as well as the um town administrator, and you're gonna provide that to both.
In other words, I'm not, I'm not digging up what the template is for the town administrator evaluate her. I'm saying that there are templates out there. That um that are specific to how a Board of Library Trustees, the questions that that should be answered.
Okay.
And then we would gather all that information and and present that in some cohesive form.
Okay.
And then feed that to the town administrator as he then would incorporate that into his eval.
So in in essence, that's what we're doing. He's gonna, he's he'll learn from what we're read, what we read.
Or or we'll incorporate that.
Good. So it's gonna be, it's gonna pertain to what a librarian should be doing and their and their responsibilities and um.
Right, and and then and then uh and then the contract, Beth had given me a template. But I've also looked at numerous towns' um actual evaluations that that fall within our our. Our area, geographic area and our population size of the type of things that they put in an eval. Some are more comprehensive than another, and so I'm trying to hash that out without like analysis paralysis and and kind of. Create a a specific document so that evaluations would necessarily come before a contract discussion, not the other way around. Um, and so um, that's what I'm working on and I will have to you in short order. Um, and then I'm awaiting, um, I had spoken with town administrator's office, Amber in the TA's office. Uh, Evan was out all last week and I had asked her to inquire as to when. Uh, it's expected that the department head evals will take place because he's been in here for two years. Um, and this will be your first eval, so um.
Well, with him.
With him, right, right, with him, with him, right. Um, and so I will have that to the the board in short order about um.
That's great.
Um, and a.
Thank you for doing that work.
No, you're welcome. A template for the eval and then a draft document, um, a snapshot of what a director's um contract. You know, could look like here, right? Um.
Can you remind us if the cycle for the contract is January first or July first?
So my uh, I think my anniversary date is actually twelve thirty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, yeah, all right. And then um on long range plan, um, did we get a um Doug, did we get um? A a consultant?
Uh, I I have an update.
Oh, yeah. Oh, please.
So um Doug and I uh agreed to to work on this particular item. Um, and I had an idea of.
Which means Erin's been helping out a lot.
Thank you. Um, no, it was really just a simple uh query to the um trustee listserv. And I got probably seven or eight responses and I said, um, please feel free to share my contact info. So I did get a facilitator to reach out to me. She's waiting um for the next steps. Um, she works with Fast Forward Libraries. Uh, she has some good um um references, so I'd like to give her the shot first. But to that end, I think we need to determine if we're gonna move forward with the the dates that we put in place, which I don't recall what they are.
So our intent, I think, had been to start to hire somebody in June and then meet in July and August. Really long range planning is a one-year cycle and we should be hiring someone this fall to meet in February and April. And then finish it, do the writing over the summer to apply for next October first.
So why does it take, why does it take a year?
Where are we then?
Because the director and staff have other duties to do and so does the board. It's just a long process.
So we're talking about, this is for next year, then then we'll.
Really, yeah.
Well, that's what, that's what I was gonna ask. Is that okay with, is that, that's okay?
It's fine with MBLC.
Okay.
So this is, you're planning this for June and July then?
Uh, so I I think what I'll do is I'll get in touch with Beth and um perhaps we can.
I see what you're saying.
We can vet the person.
Okay.
Um, see, see if they're they're worth, um, you know, because she said she can give us a proposal, but I I'm willing to take that offline if you'd like.
So this is a longer process than I had thought, because I had reached out to Mora Didi at MBLC and also then was directed. To um Robert Favini, um, the director in that area regarding the. You know, seeing about the possibility of requesting an extension of ten-one, but he may then reply that. Um, it's not necessary because it will take too long that we're, we may be looking into next year's cycle. Okay.
Also, the long range plan is to allow us to apply for MBLC grants, independent of the construction grant we already have. And until the construction grant is wrapped up, we're actually not apply, allowed to apply for any other MBLC funding, so it's sort of a moot point.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so that we, so we're.
Can wait.
So all these add, the all these people that have applied for interest to sit on the working group or or committee, that's will be on hold? Okay.
But but you're saying we can plan that for October, like we can plan for this fall or?
By November.
Okay.
We should have a consultant in place that's contracted to do two community meetings with the stakeholders who've requested and who we've appointed. If that's the route you wanna go.
Right.
Probably one will be in February, probably one will be in April, and then usually they also do a third meeting with just the staff without the director or trustees.
Right.
To do the same sort of strengths and weaknesses, squad analysis.
And and regarding the open meeting law, and I will um solidify this with the Attorney General's Office, when I spoke with Maura. She clarified that Board of Library Trustees would necessarily be the sign off on that. In other words, the director doesn't have the sole authority to, within their ro- rules, to move forward solo with the with the long range plan. And therefore, because the working group is advising a standing committee. Then um that would be subject to the open meeting law.
Okay.
Okay, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to be the appointing authority. Um, we could, we could probably just say that you could choose those people. Um, but I will seek clarification from the Attorney General's Office. I'm pretty certain the way the open meeting law read is that because. We're a committee, we're a public body that is is uh that they're feeding recommendations to us versus an individual. If you had the authority to do something on your own, similar to like a search, asking someone to do it like a search committee for a hire. That wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law, uh, because you could have done it without that working group. Because the working group is advising us as a committee, it would be subject to the open meeting law, so.
And the working group of the p- are those people that are gonna be talking?
Yes.
The public at large.
The public at large, and so however we wanna later point, if there are too many people that apply. Determining what the finite number of members is, and then those meetings would need to be posted, so. Um, staff appreciation.
So you think, Beth, you were gonna give us some feedback from the staff as to what they might like? And I think it's definitely very much warranted, but do you have any ideas?
So I did hear apparel as a suggestion that um there are some people who, I mean, we've had lots of new people since we did jackets. And polo shirts, hats was also a suggestion. Those are the only three things I heard.
Was there a specific vendor or style of shirt or anything that they kind of?
Hats was what I, hats.
I heard Sarah Bannister mentioned hats, so I think, yeah.
What kind of hat?
Yeah, what kind? Baseball cap or advisor.
I haven't heard anything else. I know you asked for feedback. I sent an email out for feedback and I didn't get any because everyone's super busy.
Okay.
Stressed out, I think they would. For staffing.
Yeah.
It's like a luncheon, like we did, um, we did the luncheon, um, was that the, was that the friends that did the lunch?
The friends used to do a lunch for us, yeah, I haven't in a while.
And that, oh, maybe we should. They've gone through a lot.
Yeah, I, the last one I remember, it was um the um uh across the street that's not, not straight now. Um, I can't think of the name right now.
Wrapped in. Bushel Pack.
No, it wasn't Bushel Pack. It was um right next door Grafton Inn, the um, the restaurant, Hunter's, yeah.
Yeah, that's where.
It was hu- yeah, Hunter's did it and um and it seemed like everybody liked it.
I heard sushi's coming in, is that true?
Yeah, it, yes, it is. Um, well, so why don't, I have an idea. I don't know what you think. They've been doing a lot, um, a lot of work. Why don't, why couldn't we give them a nice lunch and then come up with like some kind of apparel? Maybe more than a hat, maybe a hat and a shirt if we can afford it, because really they haven't, they've been doing so much.
I think a hat and shirt would be.
And they wanna feel, and then we have a lot of new employees and they wanna feel, want them to feel like, you know, we're all in this together, so.
Does that require, does that require a vote?
We have to fund it, yeah.
Yeah, you have to allocate from state aid if it was gonna be paid from state aid.
Do you wanna see how much that would cost first before coming back?
Yeah.
All right. All right, um.
Do we have consensus that that's a good idea?
Is that a good idea? Do you think that's a good idea? What's what's better? Tell us the truth.
I think some of the staff members are beyond, beyond a free meal, like they wanna be heard. They want to know that you're invested, that you have their back on a day-to-day basis, on an hour-to-hour basis. And the things that they need for the library to run successfully. Um, and I hesitate to say that in a public forum because I don't know that I have the voice to say that for them.
Okay.
But I have been in a unique position that I'm the face that people get to before they get to Beth and people are really burned out. Um, we need more staff. We need the hours covered. We need um more than just free pizza.
I know.
And a hat, I.
I know.
Being being literally just sitting down and being like, how are you doing? We have long-term employees that are looking to leave, um, that are because they're so stressed out.
And 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 I I also, as a pa- both as a patron and 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 I'm in a unique position where people, I've had to remind people multiple times of. The fact that although I'm a board member and although I'm chair of the Library Trustees, I'm not their boss. And I think people may see our role, either me individually or collectively, as being a sort of day-to-day working group. And we're like an executive group, and so I'm very cautious to um. Um, I I'll listen, but it's it's a very, I think all of us are in a precarious position to to be um. Listening, listening to to um various feedback about what people need. When like you're their boss, but then we're an executive board and it's sort of the same relation as the select board and the town administrator. That the executive boards develop policy and fund things and and. You know, among other things, in that we're in a unique position that we're not really um. Individually running focus groups or or, you know, I don't know if that requires a consultant. Um, but as an individual board member, I've, it's it's. I'm reluctant to really get into like discussions about like I can't individually authorize something or. Or fix like working conditions, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know if that, if that addresses anything or just muddies the waters, but um.
Uh, I think the thing is, I think what I'm hearing is, um, what I'm thinking too is, how do we support, you know? How do we support the librarians that are working? And I believe we've been trying hard to get um, to get more money.
Right.
As far as the budget, and we did do the Bibliotac. I know, I'm not saying this is an answer, but. That I guess the only, the way that will really help them is if we can get more staff. That's what I'm hearing. Because they're stressed out because they're o- they're overworked or they have to do work that takes them away from their main job.
Right.
And so I think that's what we need, and that's kind of hard because. We ca- how do we do that? We'd have to figure out, maybe we have a committee that meets and and thinks about it. I mean, how do we, how do we bridge that gap? And one of the problems is, we have a big new building. We, I mean, we. It has a lot of, um, it's got, there's a lot of, uh, there's lots, just so much to do in a new building that we didn't have in the past.
Right.
Uh, we have more equipment. It it's totally different and we, we try to make it so that we wouldn't have to hire as many people. But there were things that we just couldn't do or we wouldn't get the grant, like we were gonna have the, between the teenagers and the children's room, that was gonna be open. But we had to put the wall in. The front, front entrance, we didn't, we thought, well, maybe we'll put somebody. We didn't think somebody was gonna have to be there full-time and that's what's happened.
So let me, let me, let me interrupt you for a second, ask just generally high level to the board. In the past, number one, has this discussion come up? And number two, in what way does an executive board? What is that fine line between, um, you know, developing policy, paying bills, making sure things are are running okay as a facility? And not stepping in on the day-to-day operational stuff? Because it's the director's role as their boss to um facilitate the day-to-day working conditions. But that doesn't exonerate us from being concerned if we're hearing that people are unhappy, all right? And 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 uh I'll I'll put it out there without mentioning any specifics or names. People tell me stuff, you know what I mean? But um it's not stuff that, you know, s- some of it could be hearsay, some of it could be speculation. This one said that, this one said that, and I'm not prepared to to discuss that in a public setting.
So are you sa- so what are we thinking? I, does it make sense to have um? Like a focus group or mediator come in? I mean, I'm not, I guess I'm not.
I'm 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 s- I'm sensing, I'm sensing, without getting into detail or mentioning names, that. What I'm hearing, not just in this room, but hearing around town, is that maybe. A mediator or some type of focus group or some type of um, that that. Things that go on day-to-day are beyond necessarily hours or staffing, that that as a cohesive working group. That um, any organization, not just libraries, even my own workplace, could benefit from. Uh, a a staff in service, from an outside person.
But you're you're talking about someone that would come in and interview the staff to try to assess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the stress points are and.
What are the stress points? You know, and and um, yeah.
Can I say that?
Yeah, please.
I was not an emp- I didn't even think it lived in Massachusetts at the time this happened, but I, it's been stated from several staff members that. Um, Evan has agreed to mediator.
Okay.
Beth has agreed to have a mediator come in, yet.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yet no one is is doing that. We had a conversation today about, you know, what can you even do? Because, I'm sorry, my face just gave me away earlier, but I got, they're past like pizza and a lunch. I mean, they're not gonna turn it down.
Right.
Thank you for a hat, but um, so I can represent the library, but what you saw on Friday was staff members who could have walked out. Got dirty and got in the muddy water to clean up the library. You had a professional development on Thursday morning that a couple of people called out for. The core group of people that were there, regardless of how burned out and stressed out they are, were there and they were listening and they were brainstorming. And coming up with ideas for an institution that they love, and they just want to find a way to like move forward.
Right.
And that has been agreed upon from the town and from Beth's perspective and, but nobody, but it, exactly, it's who's gonna contact a mediator. It's been passed around.
And is Evan. Are we allowed to do that? Can we do it as a committee? I don't know.
Is that something that we need to fund or is that something that Evan is willing to pay for? Like, I guess.
Oh, so you're saying no one's doing it, so we have to figure out.
Has looked into it.
Okay, so.
Everyone is agreed, but no one is willing to.
We have two choices. Well, I think we could talk to Evan and say, we really want this done. And do you want, are we able to do it or should you do it and figure out who can get it done? And then get it done if that's, and see.
And and I.
That's important, and then have a timetable, because it can't take like five months.
Maybe if we do it, then it's kind of like we're a little bit removed, maybe that would, would that be, I don't know, easier?
I think the goal of the mediator is kind of removing the personal aspect of it in general, of just like these are the, like Doug was saying, these are some of the points.
Okay.
To which we can move on.
And and I I and and to, and to your point that this discussion has already um. Occurred is is kind of a relief to me. I think. occurred is, is kind of a relief to me. I think there's been some, just, just, I think there's been some tension around town. And, um, and I would just hope that the staff and the issues that, that they're facing, that, that they can hold on, and, and in light of this discussion we're having now, to sort of just give things a chance. I, I think that this has probably been a while coming, um, but I think that if people can give the process a chance, um, I would hate to have some good people leave, um, because it's reached a certain point that they feel that they have to leave, and, um. Pardon?
They don't want to.
Right.
We, we love the library.
Can we just, I think we just need to get this done.
Okay.
Who wants to take it on from the library trustee? Do, do we have Beth do it, or, or we do, somebody from the library trustee send an email or call up Evan and say, this is what we want, how do we get it? Are we, is it okay if, if the trustees do it?
I mean, I, I could certainly incorporate it in my discussions with him, because I'm already, I already have a call home.
Cause I think it's important that we do it immediately. I don't wanna wait a week, or two weeks, or three weeks.
Thank you, Roger.
And if he can't do it, then we could do, we could have a subcommittee do, work on it and just get it done.
If you need help with like, you know, scheduling meetings or researching mediators, I'm happy to help. Support that, but I think if you went to Evan as the chairman, is gonna kind of indicate the importance that we're giving this aid on.
Right, yeah, I, I think, I think we have a huge opportunity to press the reset button. I, I think that these type of processes, um, if people go into them with an open mind and, and, and if there are tensions or dissatisfaction, if people truly go in with an open mind and are willing to work on things and, and move forward, I think we can go a long way at, at improving things, and so um, I didn't anticipate the discussion would turn in this direction, but I'm, I'm damn happy that it has.
No, I'm, I'm very happy, no. Debbie, we really appreciate it.
No.
I mean, we want the library to, we want the, if, if the personnel or librarians are unhappy, we don't have a great library, and we want it to be a, an atmosphere, a working environment that they like.
And the public can, the public can feel when things aren't as they should be. And that's, that's general feedback I've gotten, and, and, and if we can move things in a, a, a good direction, it's gonna benefit everyone in, in the public, not just internally, so, alright.
I would like to suggest that, um, let's hold off on the hats and the shirts, cause
Yeah.
you know, when you're not feeling happy about institution, you're kinda like, you wanna throw it in the trash, so maybe we should do that right now. But I think that we should do the mediator, you know, like, but also, I think that we should do a nice lunch to say thank you to the staff, because when you are burnt out, it's that, I think that would be a nice thing to do.
Alright, well.
Debbie, well, I think before we do this, let me say this, before we do it, let's have, um, I'd like us to have a plan and say, this, this is when we're doing it, we have a mediator coming in, blah, 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 and we have a timetable, and then you know, if you wanna, you know, if you wanna have a lunch or something, I think that that would be better.
Alright, well, let me talk, let me talk to Evan, and, and, and I'll get a sense of, you know, how long these things are, you know, um, when we could consider having.
And do we have to fund, the, d- does that come from, you know, from us? Like, how, how would the funding work?
I, I, I will, I will.
The trustees can do that.
I will, I will discuss that with him, and I'm looking at nine fifteen, and, uh, we have some funding items, um.
So, um.
Yes, A- Aaron.
I, I'd like to, um, just put this, um, up for consideration, is perhaps we, um, cut the agenda short and have a, uh, special meeting within the next week or so.
Okay.
If we can manage to have a quorum, that would be my suggestion, cause like you said, at nine fifteen.
I know.
With, uh, you know, five or six funding requests.
Yeah, you're right.
Policy.
Can we do it in two weeks?
These are bills that have a deadline that need to be paid net thirty, so I think.
Can we just go through some of them quickly?
The bills we should do.
I think we can do them, I think we need to do them.
So, so, um, so do we agree to, to tackle then the, the funding items and, and cut, uh, uh, end the meeting, uh, with a hard deadline at nine thirty, no later, and, and tackle quickly the, the funding requests?
So if you, if we could just consider that there's two invoices for services that have already taken place and you hold off.
Alright, so we only have to tackle two?
Yeah, Signet, because they came to work on a door issue and a lock issue.
Yeah.
Which door was it?
So that's the first one, uh, B, sorry, B.
What door was it?
Um, I believe that was the main entrance.
That was the main entrance.
Okay, that was the, the.
I think we can do all these, let's work.
Yeah, and then, um, E, AMP UP, we, uh, need to renew the contract for the electronic vehicle charging stations. And that's like, imminent for a deadline, everything else could wait.
Alright, you know what, then I'm gonna recommend, um, that we tackle B and E, and because, um, I did have questions on some of the other ones, and so, is everyone okay with just tackling B and E, and then all the other items from new business forward?
Well, what about A? Like, that's not urgent, Beth, is that urgent?
So here's the thing, you approved a certain amount of money to spend on temps, we did not exhaust that budget, we still have gaps, we asked temps to work, and sometimes they work, and sometimes they can't, so I still have money available, and I'm just assuming that because I haven't spent the up to allotted expenditure, I can continue to hire temps.
Do we have a dead, we had a deadline on it before?
Is, is everyone available next Wednesday at seven?
Do we know how much money that is, Beth?
Can we do two weeks instead?
Or two weeks, I mean, what date is that?
I don't know, I, I gave it to you at the end of the tune.
Can we just, I, I know we're all tired, I don't see why, we already, on number A, we already said that Beth could spend that money, she just doesn't spend it.
Yeah, we can.
Can we just say yes?
Alright, I'll accept a motion to extend the balance of previously approved funds for staffing through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I take a motion.
Alright, uh, so moved by, uh, Carrie, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Doug, um, any discussion on the motion?
No.
I'll listen, I'll listen, she speaks for us, I'll, I'll listen favor.
Aye.
All opposed, declare the motion carried.
Okay.
Um, I will accept a motion to, uh, fund, uh, twelve hundred sixty to Signet from state aid.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve that funding.
Alright, motion made, and motion made by John, seconded by Dana to approve funding, any discussion?
This was Signet, I'm sorry.
Signet, uh, is online and remote troubleshooting for the door locking software.
Right, and they fixed the door that had the crash bar.
Ultimately, somebody else, a locksmith put the new spring in the door temporarily, and then Chandler, the owner of the door, put in the actual spring.
Okay.
So, they determined that it was not a software issue, which I insisted when it happened.
Alright, um.
We have to pay him for the time.
Alright, alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare, declare the motion carried. Um, funding request for seven hundred fifty to CRF interior systems from state aid. Do I have a motion?
I thought we would decide to table some.
Over table, oh, I'm.
Why don't we just do it if we can do it?
It's like, it's not.
I think we should just do it if we can.
I think we could probably knock these out in five minutes.
Yeah, I think we should, and if we have questions, let's ask.
Alright, um, do I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the CRF interior systems funding.
Alright, second, do I have a second?
I'm second it.
Alright, motion made by, uh, John, seconded by Dana. I noticed that the documents only added up to three hundred fifteen eighty-two. Um, what's the seven fifty? Unless I mistake them.
Um, CRF is for seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's, um, it's for the folding door.
Yeah, I see seven fifty.
Yeah, I see seven fifty.
Yeah, I think we're talking about the request where I said up to five hundred dollars for bookends.
Oh, alright, alright, sorry about that, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, any, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, just briefly, um, do we need to have annual service on, on these doors? I know it's never been done before.
It's apparently recommended. I will say that I got dumped with seven binders for a user's manual for the new building, and no one ever sat down with me to say, here's what you need to do, here's the warranties, here's the anticipated maintenance expenses. So it was not put into the regular budget. I got an email from this company who either provided or installed it, saying you're supposed to be doing annual maintenance to lubricate it and check it and make sure that it works as intended. It's been two years now that it's been existing and operational, and I think it's worth spending the money to do it, but you can vote however you would like.
And which doors are these?
It's the door that splits meeting room A and B in half, it's the, it's the panel doors that slide on a track, so they wanna lubricate it and make sure all the gears are working for a safety standpoint.
So, so my only concern, uh, with something like this is that you pay it once and they got you, you're gonna have to pay this every year and probably budget for it.
But if it's needed.
But it, but it's a good insurance to make sure that it's.
Operational, so we don't have to replace it at a higher expense at some point, I think. I could certainly, uh, see if there's other companies who do it, who might be less expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're not moved every day, so.
And, I mean, and if there are any, uh, significant objections, I mean, we, you could always withdraw your, your motion, and second, we could table this or vote on it now.
I, I would say we vote on it now to approve, and then if, come next year, I don't know, we don't use the doors at all, or we found that they broke and we needed the contract, then we can make a better decision, but.
Okay.
You can also vote against funding.
So this is, this is not, um, any sort of, uh, what, what they, you call, um, um, warranty services as well, right? So anything could happen to these doors regardless of the seven hundred fifty bucks, and then we'd still have to pay for it. Right, so I just wanna make that very clear, that all they're doing is, um, making sure it's in good working order for us, so.
If you'd like to table it, I can go back and look at the warranty, and if the warranty is for ten years, we can say, oh, it's free.
Alright.
Yeah.
If it's not maintained, it may invalidate the warranty.
I don't.
Yeah, I'd like to table this one, that would be my.
Alright, do I, uh, uh, then would you be willing to withdraw your motion in your seconds?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, motion's withdrawn, seconds withdrawn, um, alright, um, funding request nine fifty and forty, um, actually, you know what? I had some questions about HootSuite, I, I, I would, I would like to table that if, if anyone, if everyone's okay. Um, a thousand dollars for AMP UP for renewal.
I'm sorry, before we, is that gonna, um, is it, um, coming up, like it's, like you can wait on that one?
We don't currently subscribe to it, but it is impacting staff's comfort level and ability to post to social media, because they have to use their personal devices for Instagram, or their Facebook profiles are associated personally with the library's website, so if we use Hou, HootSuite, they can do it on a computer and it anonymizes it.
Okay, I.
So that's why they master.
I think that Beth can explain this, it's not, it's, it's software that people use, corporations, anybody that's doing a lot of social media, it makes it more effective. And it's not like.
I understand what it is, but I, I have questions about it.
And I have questions about it too regarding alternatives and, and, and.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and, and.
I, I guess, I guess on this particular one, like, I think, like, we don't need to micromanage too much, like.
Yeah.
You know, like, there's certain things, I, I don't know, like.
Yeah, and, and I, but, um, I, I think considering both of our concerns, which I think could lead into some significant discussion, I don't see it would be harmed to wait two weeks for another meeting, that's.
Well, that, that means the staff's really overwhelmed, doing too much.
Right.
They're trying to do a lot of social media, I do social media, and if you do it right, it takes a lot of time.
Just not, because.
I'm a social media per.
They're just not using it?
It's not me, no, this request is not for me.
Okay, so that, it lets them use their personal computer, doesn't it also let them?
I have doubts that this will solve.
Okay.
Alright, and I had other concerns.
Alright.
But.
And we're up on, we're up on nine.
Beth, would you be able to talk to it at another time? Well, explain what it is and why you want it.
Explain what it is whenever.
Alright, alright.
Alright.
Then moving on, I, I guess deferring that or tabling that, moving on to five E, AMP UP, that's, that's a.
We need to.
I feel like that's pretty imperative.
Alright, um, I'll accept the motion for a thousand dollar funding request to AMP UP for renewal from state aid.
I make a motion to, um, pay a thousand dollars to AMP UP to renew our elec, our vehicle charging station.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, motion made by Carrie, seconded by John, do I have any discussion?
Uh, I have one point, which is just that, uh, uh, the, the town is the, is the one that gets the money from the chargers, right?
Yeah, it sounds like that's not negotiable, it goes to the general fund, we don't get it back.
But then we're, we're paying for the chargers.
Yes, that, I feel like this is a little bit like the argument I used to make about fines, if we took in four thousand dollars worth of fines, they give us back this year, a million dollars in budget, so it's okay that we don't get nickled and dimed back and forth. We are currently charging.
And it makes the library more attractive to patrons.
We're currently.
We're the only, we're the only chargers.
Yeah, that, that's a floor.
Yeah, I think it's the same point, actually, that we're charging more to the patrons than the electricity is actually worth. And the town in the last couple of years has also taken away the cost of us paying for our parking lot lights, which the board did when they put in the parking lot, and then did for several years, even after our street lamp fund was established. So I feel like if the town's picking up some of our electrical, it's okay.
Alright, um, any further discussion on the thousand dollars to AMP UP? Hearing none, all listen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried, uh, five hundred dollars funding for bookends for borrowed services and teen services, do I have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to fund a request for up to five hundred dollars for bookends for borrowed services and teen services.
And where would the funding, uh, alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion made by Aaron, seconded by John, we, what's the funding source?
State aid.
Alright, so it's understood that it's state aid. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none.
Is this just a deficiency in?
Yeah, it's been for quite some time.
Yeah, they, they do slowly break down over time, and we need to replenish them, but really, it's that we have more area. We, it could have been an FF anything that we budgeted for, but it didn't happen as part of the building program. Um, we have a need for more, and I felt like that's twenty or twenty-five percent of our office material budget. So I didn't wanna take that chunk away from, like, toilet paper and toner and ink that, you know, pens that we've already budgeted for with this additional new purchase that we didn't think about when we did the FY twenty-four budget last year, and it's apparently, it's an urgent need staff have brought forth, so I said I would bring it to the board for funding, so they don't have to wait another year for it to get put into the budget.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried, alright, so we've deferred, um, five B? No, we've deferred five C?
Nope.
And D?
D.
Five D.
Five D, the.
C and D.
Yeah.
C and D.
So we, we, no, we didn't approve seven fifty for a CRF, did we?
Oh, you're right.
Good question.
No, no, so, so we've deferred, um, five C, five D only, correct? Uh, policy update, um, we've read the director's report, if we have any questions, we can, uh, talk to you. You didn't have any further public input, um, she didn't have any library-related announcements. The, the upcoming meetings are listed, um, when will we meet next to discuss, um, those items? At least at the very top of the agenda that we've, um, um.
I think the request we do that in two weeks from today.
It's, and what date is that?
That's, um, September six.
September sixth.
Alright, at seven o'clock? Alright.
I'm not available.
I may not be able to attend.
Right.
I have.
Can it be on a Thursday?
What about next Wednesday?
I have a childcare issue on Thursday.
Alright, what about next Wednesday?
I can't do next Wednesday.
And can everyone else make next Wednesday?
Yep.
I think.
I say this tongue-in-cheek would kill you to miss it. We're never, we're never gonna, I don't think we'll ever have everyone, like, on these off-cycle meetings, I don't think we'll have everyone.
I'm insulting, no.
Everyone be available. I, I don't think we'd ever land on him.
How many people do we have that attends?
The thirtieth?
The thirtieth?
I can do the thirtieth.
What's the thirtieth, what date is that?
Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Next Wednesday.
Week, today.
I can, I can make it.
Does everyone but Carrie?
And we don't know about Stephanie.
I don't know about Stephanie.
Would it be seven o'clock again? Do they have to film, does he have to do his work too?
Oh, we have to get.
We have to make sure he's available, in this room is available.
Who's, we can also record it with Zoom if we have to.